My name is Representative Zaleski. Along with Senator Nolan, I'm co-chair of the committee. Briefly, we're trying to address several concerns within the criminal justice system. And we're glad that we could get going today. The hour is late, though, and we do have people that wish to have to get on the road and on train. So I'm not going to take up the committee's time. I'm going to pass the mic to Chairperson Nolan.
All right. Thank you, Representative Zaleski. I want to thank one and all for coming. I look out into the audience, and it looks like just one large criminal law committee hearing. And I want to thank all of those who have come down here to invest their valuable time. I'm not going to take up an awful lot of time either, but I think we all have a set of expectations and an idea of what we would like to see result from these proceedings over the next six months or so. We have a very short period of time in order to preside over what is a very weighty issue here in the state of Illinois and, of course, across our nation. One of the things I'd like to see us do is to be able to develop some legislation that will help address our immediate concerns with respect to both efficiency and fairness within our criminal justice system. But also, too, I will say this from the very beginning, we need to develop a process by which to come back to this issue time and again over the next several years, probably. And so I'm hopeful that what we will all agree is that we should develop or draft legislation that will create the existence of an ongoing assembly or council, very much like our Council on Government Forecasting and Accountability, that will make, provide observations and perhaps even make recommendations moving ahead. That's how large this issue really is. Again, you know, we politicians over these many years have never lost any votes by being tough on crime. I think that's something that we all recognize and realize that we are here. And at the state, it has also been said, and I agree, we do basically three things. We educate, we medicate, and we incarcerate. And I would imagine everyone in this room would not have to struggle long to connect the dots and understand that if we do not educate, we will medicate, and if we do not medicate, we will incarcerate. I'm hopeful, too, that we will bring all of these various disciplines and areas of concern that come to bear on criminal justice here in the state of Illinois and do something meaningful about the challenge that lies ahead. So with that, we also have some others who would like to speak.
We'll go clockwise with Senator Raul.
Good afternoon. I look forward to serving on this committee. Thanks.
Spokesperson Rebaletti.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, members, and thank you for everybody in attendance and those watching on the Internet. I think we have a pretty important task ahead of us. And I've had the opportunity to work on these issues with Senator Raul and some of the other folks here for a number of years. And I hope that this process is truly a give and take. There are some things I would like to see, and I think that there are folks on the other side of some issues that I'm sure that I can go and see that way of doing things as well. Instead of passing bills in one chamber and somebody killing them in the other, I think this is an opportunity for the point people from the different caucuses to come to a meeting of minds with testimony from people throughout the state, from experts, and try to craft some legislation that makes sense, that makes sure that the public safety of the state is preserved, and we do so in an efficient and effective manner. So I look forward to serving and working with everybody here.
Representative Anthony. Okay. Representative Leader Turner.
Just like to thank all the interested parties for being here today, and I'm ready to work. Let's get to it.
Senator Murphy.
I concur with Senator Raul's remarks.
Senator Ryder.
Yeah, they're waiting.
Okay. The agenda for today, we're going to hear from the Illinois Department of Corrections, Kathy Saltmarsh from the Sentencing Policy Advisory Council, John Mackey from the John Howard Association, Carr Smith from the Cook County Sheriff's Office, and Raymond Rose from Lake County Sheriff's Office. For those of you wishing to offer testimony in a public setting, our time today was limited, given that J. Carr met before us. And as you can see, we're having some technical quirks with witness slips and things along that line, so we won't be able to hear open comment today. That being said, we're going to make a day and time available for individuals to come forth and offer testimony or testimonials or suggestions to the committee. It just simply, unfortunately, won't be today, so I apologize for that. But we will, at some point, allow for open testimony, and we will make it perfectly clear abundantly in advance when that opportunity will be arrived. But with that, we will start with the Illinois Department of Corrections. I see the director here, so whenever he's ready.
The Department of Corrections, the criminal justice system, and any investment in our communities are all related. I assign great value to any coordinated review of effort or effort. Please know that I, this department's executive staff, and every one of our hard-working and dedicated employees stand ready to assist in these efforts at any time. Governor Quinn and I support reform that will strengthen our criminal justice system and the state's public safety.
Director, I'm going to add Representative Duncan to the roll. I apologize. Go ahead.
Hi, Representative. It is necessary to take a comprehensive approach that includes sentencing reforms and greater investment in the type of effective reentry and diversion program that were proposed in this year's budget. It is possible and important to be tough on crime, but also smart on crime at the same time. I have with me my chief of staff, Brian Glickler, and our assistant director, Gladys Taylor, to answer any questions. I could start by answering the three questions that were posed, if that's what you would prefer.
Yeah. Director, if you could identify, as much as I know and love you, and I'm not sure that everybody does, if you could just identify your name and title for the record.
Absolutely. For 41 years, I've been doing this. My name is Salvador Tony Godinez. I'm the director for the Illinois Department of Corrections since May of 2011.
Okay. Is that your testimony, or do others on your staff wish to testify?
Well, I'm opening up to you for questions, or we can answer the three questions that were posed to us, the current state of the system and so forth.
That would be great, if you could start there.
Okay, if you don't mind. The current population, as we said, are 48,851, 46,000 male, approximately 3,000 female. Our total beds available are 50,307. Single-celled in our department, a lot of people don't realize this, is only 6% of our inmates are single-celled. 69% are double-celled. The rest are in dormitory settings. We have 46 offenders on electronic detention. We have 420 sex offenders on electronic monitoring. IDOC budget has been essentially flat for the past seven or eight fiscal years. However, our inmate population has increased by over 10% in that period. One of the biggest problems with having an increase in population is the lack of program services. As I have detailed in previous hearings, we are crowded because we have beds available. We are overcrowded in the sense that we don't have programs available for everybody that needs one. We have currently on our waiting list 5,300 for educational services, this is on our waiting list, and 500 for substance abuse treatment. The current state of the system, the second question, is continued laws to enhance sentencing, increase length of stays, increases the, lessens the exits. For example, in fiscal year 13, we had 30,639 exits, which is lower than our five-year average of 32,915. Truth of sentencing, of course, requires 75% to 85% of the time served, which, again, increases the time someone spends in our system. Court admissions, which we have no discretion whatsoever, there's 22,235 total court admissions in fiscal year 13, which is higher than our five-year average of 21,943. Technical violations, of which we do have some discretion, has been lessened. With fiscal year 13, there were 8,890 total violations, which is lower than our five-year average of 11,526. What I'm trying to show is that where we have some input and discretion, we have taken matters seriously. Total IDOC admissions for fiscal year 13, 31,125. The five-year average is 33,470. Violators at the door, there is individuals that we cannot release because they don't have suitable housing. Many of those are sex offenders. But there are 1,576 inmates actually doing parole in our facilities. There are parole violators because they have nowhere to go. Of the 1,576, approximately, I'm sorry, the 1,576, approximately 1,300 are sex offenders. With less emphasis on boot camps, we now have 200 beds available for boot camps. People are going away from recommending or sentencing people to boot camp. Excuse me a second, I'm sorry. Do you have the third sheet? Okay, I'm sorry. And the last question asked of us was our concepts for implementations to reduce population. One is, of course, sentence reform. Create community-based systems of deferring certain Class III and IV offenses to counties for treatment. And by the way, Class III's and IV's comprise our greatest admissions during the past years, III's and IV's. Evaluate crimes that are subject to truth in sentencing. And continued support for adult redeploy. Because of adult redeploy, 1,200 individuals have been deflected from our system. That doesn't sound like much, but that's a, so, that's an institution, a minimum security institution for us. Supplemental sentence credit has already been implemented, and 3,861 offenders have received SSC credit and have been released to date under this program. This equates to almost one-half a million days of reduced times, 477,931 days of reduced time. Out of the 3784 offenders released, a total of only 328 have violated. That's 8.6%, while only 262 have been returned to IDOC. That is under 7% that have been returned. If you compare that to our average recidivism rate, that's under 7%. Our recidivism rate is 47% for the rest of the population. We also are in the process of implementing the risk assessment tool and offender 360, offender tracking system, and also electronic medical records. Increased programming opportunities, the governor's fiscal year 15 budget introduced included $20 million in additional funding to enhance IDOC institutional-based and community-based programming opportunities. Proper programming, such as education, vocational training, and treatment, is key to reducing the likelihood of offenders returning to our system. This increased funding would have increased vocational, educational opportunities, increased community-based treatment slots, added community-based mental health beds for parolees, reestablished halfway-back programming, increased substance abuse treatment programming, and added reentry specialists and counselors for proper implementation of the risk assessment tool. The Department of Corrections estimate that these investments would lead to at least a 10% reduction in recidivism, which means approximately 3,000 fewer inmates in the system after three years. This reduction would correlate to $27.5 million in annual savings. Thus, a net savings of $7.5 million a year would be achieved through these investments. Unfortunately, the final budget that was passed for IDOC did not include this investment program. Other thoughts for consideration that we're looking towards are specialized treatment for DUI offenders. We have presently 2,500 individuals locked up in the Illinois Department of Corrections for DUI offenses. We had proposed the opening of Murphy's Burrow to do a treatment program for these individuals. Others include the taking a look, again, at the Class III and IV offenders, which comprise the most that have been admitted to our system in the past year. Criminal versus administrative penalties for certain low-level nonviolent crimes. Taking a look also, we want to take a look at our elderly incapacitated release for our geriatric population, which has grown 1,000, I don't know, a few years ago, five years ago, to 7,000 now, of individuals that are over the age of 50 in our system now. As part of sentencing reform, we can also work with DJJ in conjunction to examine crimes where juveniles are tried as adults. We will work with the current wave of thinking on juvenile appreciation of criminal acts versus adults. And with that, we open for any questions.
Okay. Chairperson Nolan, then Senator Murphy, then anybody, then Representative Turner.
Thank you, Director. And I presume we'll have a copy of your report here today.
Sure.
Is that right? Not having had a chance to look at that previously, and I tried to listen close to, excuse me, some of the numbers that you presented. Just succinctly, if you can estimate, and if you can't, that's okay. I know this may be a question understandably not prepared for, but of the population at DOC, what percentage would you consider nonviolent?
The only reason it's hard to say is because you cannot go on the crime itself. We have individuals that have committed serious crimes that I wouldn't consider violent. We have others that have committed non-serious crimes that I would consider violent. And a good example of that is that not everybody that is eligible by law for SSC, do we allow out or give approved time for SSC sentence credit because they have some violence in the background? So that's a very difficult question to answer. I think it would be best answered once we implement the risk assessment tool. That let's, let a proven instrument out there tell us who the nonviolent individuals are.
Again, and please forgive me, but, and I understand what you're saying, because geriatric inmate, of course, that's 80 years old or so, may not present as much of a threat as they may have once upon a time, right?
Correct.
So, but your best estimate, can you give us an estimate, absent use of the tool? And if the answer is no, that's okay.
No, I'm not going to say no to you. You know, I'm going to go bank on my many years of experience that, but I want to do a backdrop to this, having worked so many years in this business, is that, you know, 90% of the inmates in our system don't produce violent tendencies in our system because of the structure. Now, if you were, having worked parole as well, once they get out, I would say another good percentage of them don't exhibit violent tendencies while out if they, if they're giving structure. But if you were going to tell me, I have to give you a number off the top of my head, I would tell you probably at the very least 35% of the individuals locked up are not violent.
Fair enough. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Anything further?
Senator Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Director. Nice to see you. It seems like, you know, kind of the point of this committee is to try to strike that balance between being able, I think the chairman has expressed an interest in lengthening sentences for violent crimes, gun crimes, but there's a need to make room in an overcrowded prison system. I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but you had referenced the large percentage of people who are in our correctional system now that are Class III and IV felony, and that that's the predominant population. If, in fact, there were a desire beyond the chairman, but more broadly throughout the General Assembly, to enhance penalties for violent crimes, violent gun crimes, and you were asked, and you are in the process of being asked, what are the least, what are the, what are the III's and IV's that are in your system now that we can most afford to reduce sentences on while minimizing risk of increased threat to the public?
Are you, are you asking the type of III's and IV's?
Yeah.
Well, I can tell you, answering in a roundabout way, the most admissions by category offense, number one is drugs. Two is weapons, three is assault behavior, and four is theft. So the number one and number four, drugs and theft. I would concentrate on those two.
What do you think would make sense? You know, presumably, there are drug and theft offenses that warrant time in the correctional system. Would you agree?
I would agree that the judges are better equipped than I to determine whether or not somebody goes in. I'm not going to argue whether someone belongs or doesn't belong. What I'm going to state is how much it costs and whether or not it works, and what could possibly work better. And then someone else can make a decision on whether or not we should try that or continue to sentence to the Department of Corrections.
You had made reference to, was it the SCC program?
Yes, the sentence credit, supplemental sentence credit.
Is that something that you feel the department is taking full advantage of existing law on today? And if the answer is yes, could you explain sort of the process of how you go through applying that or not in a given circumstance?
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The answer isn't yes. We haven't taken full advantage of it because we've been so careful as to who we let out, and obviously, we've been successful since less than 7% have been violated. So we're doing extremely well, but we are extremely cautious, and we're doing it painstakingly, you know, with people and not instruments. We've got seven levels of review before we send somebody out. There are also a lot of individuals that aren't even eligible to get it because they're coming in with a short period of time. I think what this committee needs to hear is that 50% of our female population, 3,000, so 1,500, have one year or less to do. And while as shocking as that may sound, 40% of the male population have one year or less to do. Yet, we can't bank on those 1,500 and the 40% of the male automatically to be eligible for that sentence credit because we want to take a look at any past crimes of violence, any, any, any past behavior in our system. You know, again, it was, it was not done to reduce the population. It was done and put in place to manage our population better.
The, is this a tool that other states have as well?
I've worked in many states, and I think every state that I've worked in has some tool available as a release valve.
Like this, yeah.
Yes.
Is, do you know how our 7% compares, you know, because in theory, you could go overboard in terms of how stringent you are in reviewing people.
Yes.
To the detriment, meaning that there are more people left in prison than maybe would be optimal.
Correct.
The flip side is, you could be too lax and have too many people out that shouldn't be. And I appreciate that currently you feel you're erring on the side of keeping people in jail rather than having less safe people out on the street. And that is, and that approach here is resulting in about a 7% recidivism rate for that population. Do you know how that compares to other states who have a comparable tool that they're using in this circumstance?
I don't know for certain, but I sure would be willing to bet that we're better than anybody in the, because that is such a low number, but I want, I want everyone to understand.
But low is not necessarily the best.
No, but, but I want everyone to understand, we are so careful because it take, you're only going to find out about the guy that everyone believes shouldn't have been out there. And that will cover the stories, and we'll back off even more so. And that's why we're, we're very proud of the way we've done it, and we're still going to be very cautious, absent a risk assessment tool that we could depend on, that we could fall back on.
So you don't, you don't, do you feel that your use of the tool today is optimizing our opportunity to minimize the prison population?
No.
Okay. What would you do to get to a point where you would optimize this tool in terms of reducing our prison population?
Ask for the money to hire the people that can get the risk assessment tool going faster so we can get it going, and we can then start relying on best practices.
That, and that kind of feeds into, I guess, my last area that I wanted to touch on. You know, we, we go through the appropriations process every year, and one of my recurring frustrations is the amount of money that your department spends on overtime. Because I've heard for a number of years that that was going to go down to the 20 to 25 million range, which would be the norm and would be a reasonably expected amount if you were staffed properly. And yet, we consistently end up in the 60, 50 to 60 million range. You know, you're talking 35 to 40 million dollars that is going into overtime that could go in, maybe, you know, you're, obviously, you're going to have new hires to address that, which I can understand. But there is money there in the tens of millions, whether it's the full 40 or some fraction thereof, that we ought to be able to use to do some of the things that you're talking about. Where are we at in terms of finally bringing down that stubborn overtime number?
I'm going to ask Brian to answer that.
Sure.
Because he could give a better technical answer to that, if you don't mind.
Yes. Senator, we concur. I mean, we would like to see the overtime figures reduced more than, more than anybody, and actually have been working to reduce overtime. In fiscal year 14, we actually worked approximately 180,000 hours fewer, fewer overtime hours in fiscal year 14 as compared to fiscal year 13. That was despite having extremely high attrition levels in fiscal year 14 due to, you know, various factors. And many people wanted to retire due to some of the pension changes that were being discussed. So we experienced higher-than-normal attrition during, over the course of the fiscal year. Despite the fact that we were hiring pretty well constantly throughout the year, our hiring was not able to keep pace with the level of attrition. So that was another factor that we still struggled with, not being able to reduce the overtime in the increments that we would like to see. I believe now that that wave has kind of passed us, at least initially, that our attrition rates will fall back to more normal levels, where as long as we continue to hire in a consistent pattern and maintain staffing levels, we should start seeing real significant reductions in overtime hours worked. When you look at dollars, it's, it's hard to compare dollars, especially when you compare fiscal year 13 to fiscal year 14, because the value of an overtime hour in fiscal year 13 was about $40 an hour. And that was because, at that time, the department had frozen the wage rates for the collective bargaining staff due to the wage increases not being funded. In fiscal year 14, due to the judgments that were sought against us in the courts, we had to unfreeze those salaries. So the overtime hour went to an average of over $44 an hour in fiscal year 14. So that was about a 9.5% increase in the hourly cost for an overtime hour. So the, the way to decrease overtime is to not only hire the staff, but stable, and once you get up to the staffing figures that you need to be at for each facility, keep it stabilized, not have various fluctuations significantly up and down that cause, make it more difficult to manage, not only overtime, but cause other operational issues as well.
Okay. Now, so, and I appreciate that context. Can we, how much was overtime in fiscal year 14?
Fiscal year 14 was approximately $60 million, about 1.5 million hours.
And then for 13, what was the hours and the dollar amount?
With $63 million in FY '13 and approximately 1.8 million hours, or 1.7 million hours.
Okay. And what do you project for '15?
Approximately 40, 40 to 44 million dollars in overtime. I don't know what the, what that correlates into hours, Senator.
Okay. All right. Thanks very much.
Leader Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Director, members for being here today. I just had a question. You highlighted You highlighted the piece about the elderly and that the population went from 1,000 to 7,000. That was over how many years?
Oh, since when? Since 1990.
Since 1990?
1,000 in 1990, 7,000 now.
And so on average, over, how many are you, what are you increasing every year? What are you projecting for the next couple of years? Are you expecting that population to grow by a significant number?
I want to give you an accurate answer. If you allow me time, I'll get you an accurate answer. I don't know that answer.
And many of these, there have been numbers tossed around in the past as to how much it costs DOC to house those elderly inmates. What's that general number again? Approximately?
Representative, I don't know. We can look and see about elderly inmates specifically. Statewide, our average is about $21,000 per inmate. But obviously, that includes everybody, not just the elderly inmate, which is definitely a more costly inmate to incarcerate, yes.
Yeah, if we can get like a closer to aggregate number, does it pertain specifically to that elderly population? That'd be helpful. And what's the, typically with elderly inmates, when they're released, you don't necessarily deal with recidivism too much with them? Or is that a big issue? Or would most of them be deemed nonviolent at this point?
I would say anecdotally, yes. We don't get many elderly returning to our systems.
So in the whole conversation about, you know, what we plan to do here on this committee, you would recommend that the elderly population be included in those discussions in terms of reform?
Yeah, I did include it as the population that we could probably be taking a look at as far as the sentences that they're given and then whether or not there's some way that there could be a consideration for medical releases.
Is that just around the idea of medical release? Or is, or maybe, you know, like having served extended periods of time and then being reevaluated and deemed as not a threat, maybe those should be given some sort of consideration as well?
I am narrowing it down specifically to that elderly population and not just anybody who needs a medical release.
Right, right, right. Elderly population with a medical release. But I was getting at elderly population that may have a medical, you know, issue or whatnot. But there may have been some that were just sentenced for super long periods of time.
Correct.
And have served a very long time up until this point. And would you recommend that those be considered for, or added into that discussion about early release around that population?
I would only recommend it on a case-by-case basis.
Sure, sure.
Given all the factors.
Okay.
Thank you.
Representative Rebaletti.
Thank you, Director. Thank you for being here and good to see you all. I took a bunch of notes here because there's so many things to talk about. And I know that we've had these conversations over the years. But I think with now more of a narrow focus as to what we're looking at, and Leader Turner talked about geriatric population. And one of the questions is what is considered geriatric population? 50? 60? 70? What are we determining as geriatric?
I thought we were using 50.
Representative, I believe our figures in the past assumed inmates 55 years and older.
But we've broken down age 55 to 60.
And that will be within the material that you'll be getting to us electronically?
It can be.
I think that would be helpful because I know that there have been pieces of legislation, Leader Turner has carried it, former Representative Malaro and others have carried a bill saying that the geriatric population should be reviewed at age 50. And I think it's, I've always been concerned about those that have been sentenced for long periods of time because most of those folks are either sex offenders or murderers. I would anticipate that are spending 25, 35, 40 natural life. And it's been always one of my concerns that after the death penalty was abolished and after TAMS was closed, that the next thing was we'd have natural life without parole. However, we'd have exceptions because if you got sick, we would let you out. Or if you got to be age 50, you would be, you could be let out as well. And I think that's been a concern. You said that you have enough bed space right now. Is that with double bunking in gymnasiums?
I didn't want it to sound emphatically, though.
No, I understand that. And I'm not looking to either fill the spaces.
Right.
But at the same time, in a perfect setting, based on what the numbers should be, based on professional standards, based on how many correctional officers you have in facilities, what should the population be at?
That's a question that cannot be answered because even the National Institute of Corrections doesn't go by ratios. Ratios are misleading because you're not taking into account the type of the facility, the type of the offender. You know, there are some populations that do well in a dormitory setting. There are some populations that don't. So that's not an answer that I can give you.
And I have concerns, Director, as I'm sure you do. There's always lawsuits that are floating around regarding overpopulation. And from what, if you could tell us about what your concerns are with that, with respect and as to this penalty litigation, I know you can't say anything. But obviously, we've seen what happened in California where orders come down to DOC to start letting people out. And so I don't think that's a good way for us to do business. I'd rather work with these fine folks here to accomplish something that works for Illinois before a federal judge tells us what to do. So how do we get to that position?
As I stated before, we're in the midst of a vicious cycle that we want to get more people eligible for sentence credit, but they have to be in programs. And because we don't have enough programs and there's waiting lists, we can't get them sentence credit, which means they can't get out sooner even though they're deserving of it by getting these programs. So from that standpoint, as I stated before, we are overcrowded in the sense that we can't get programs to individuals who want these programs, who would benefit from these programs.
And I have been working with Gladys on some issues with respect to communication between law enforcement and treatment providers. If you can tell us where that is so that the state, all law enforcement and folks involved from point of arrest until parole or probation, that law enforcement throughout states, attorneys, police, treatment providers have all this information so that we're not wasting as much time with entering data. Gladys, if you could maybe speak to that for a little bit.
Good afternoon. I'm Gladys Taylor. I'm the Assistant Director for the Illinois Department of Corrections. And one of the state's initiatives is to better inform the justice community about the population that ultimately ends up in the Department of Corrections. The National Governors Association will actually be in Illinois later this week. We're doing a data sharing initiative where we're going to look at all of the justice-involved agencies across the state, look at the information that could potentially be shared so that we don't recreate processes across the criminal justice system, that we share information across the criminal justice system to better inform the decisions that are made across the criminal justice system. We're going to start with two counties that represent significant commitments to the Department of Corrections, naturally, not Cook, that's the big one. But we're going to look at what the arrest and bail decisions. We're going to follow the data through the court system. We're going to look at risk assessment, which should be a driver about any decision that is made in a criminal justice system. And hopefully, that we should start to see some return on that investment. So that coupled with, as the Director said, risk assessment really needs to drive many of the decisions that are going to be made regarding this justice-involved population. Today, we're submitting a grant, application for a plan that we've been working on for the past year to the Department of Justice on risk assessment implementation. The goal is to evaluate our entire 49,000 in custody, the 28,000 that are on parole, define what their needs are, and then address the needs gaps. Then we'll be able to quantify and qualify to the members of the General Assembly why we need funding and for what we need funding for. Right now, we make decisions based on the committing offense, but we don't know whether that over 55 person will actually commit another crime. We don't know if that under 25 will commit another crime. The Director is correct. We have been cautious about 3,800 that we've actually released on supplemental sentence credit. Roughly about 48% of that population is eligible for supplemental sentence credit. But we have to be careful because that one case that we do let go and that person commits another crime, then it puts the entire program on hold.
No, I know we saw that about four years ago, some issues with some release. But you and I talked about this, and I think that the committee and the public need to know, what does it cost you each week to enter in data that has already been entered in by other law enforcement agencies? So an inmate comes in from Cook or DuPage and they are receiving staple for reception and classification.
Our reception and classification process per offender is roughly about $2,000 per offender. So if we're processing 30,000 offenders in on an annual basis, we're looking at $60 million.
So we're spending almost $1 million a week plus to re-enter data and to review things that if we're able to be more uniform, if a prosecutor in Cook enters something in, you should already be able to have that into your system. Once an inmate is transferred from 26th Street down to Stateville, you don't have to re-enter data and have staff working on that when they could be working on other things. Is that fair to say?
That's correct. So Illinois or the Department of Corrections is roughly shortly away, we're few, maybe a month or two away from implementing a new offender management system. And the system is designed so that we can accept the information from the committed counties electronically, eliminating the paper, eliminating the redundancies, and to better inform us at intake. If we receive offenders that have medical or mental health issues, we'll know before they arrive at our intake doors how to address their needs.
Sorry. We are actually now working with the Sheriff's Department for those turnarounds, those inmates that are just being sent to the state to be released. And we're working with the county, looking at working together, releasing them from the county so you don't have to duplicate that whole process.
And also make sure that people who need services are getting them, not folks that have master's degrees getting GEDs because we don't know at the DOC that they have a master's, and now they're taking somebody's space to get a GED and get 90 days off of their sentence. Is that?
Plus, we also, in our institutions, we're no longer placing individuals in programs that have a date that's way out there as opposed to concentrating on that 40% that are going to get out in a year.
And that was my next, one of my next questions. You said the waiting list for services, you gave us a number.
Correct.
We're not looking at people with outdates of 12 years. We're looking at people, what timeframe are we looking at? One, two, three years of an outdate that we're trying to get services to?
I don't know the specific time, but we are focusing very hard on those individuals that are eligible for that sentence credit. So that program will then allow us to put them in to receive the sentence credit. And many of those individuals are only one to two to three years out.
There's a program called Rapid Repat, which passed in our House a couple of years ago, and did not see the light of day in the Senate. Other states have used it. Rhode Island has just implemented it. Texas, I mean, Arizona, New York, other states have been using it where nonviolent, non-citizens are able to be expedited back to their home country if they agree to deportation. They use it as hearing via video conferences. That's something that the department has looked into, is to try to save some bed space and remove nonviolent offenders in a different way besides looking at the geriatric populations and other populations?
We've not looked at it specifically in that vein. What we looked at is almost the opposite, those that are violent offenders that heretofore we were keeping in our system. We have, through the work of our Public Safety Chief, Brad Curry, and the ICE have agreed to deport those individuals that have been released that are violent and dangerous back to their country.
Would that be something that you think we should look at if you have nonviolent, non-citizens that might be here on a possession for, on a stolen motor vehicle, and they're going to be deported at the end of their sentence? Is that something that we could look at, expediting their outdate and turn them over to ICE for deportation?
Given the circumstances you stated, absolutely. Where they are willing to go back, absolutely.
Thank you.
Senator Raul.
I'll take the liberty of doing my opening remarks in the form of what I call qualmance, question comments. I'm happy that both of you characterize, emphasize to us that we should learn to characterize risk, not on the basis of the offense that brought the individual to the system, but that the risk assessment ought to be the driver of such a characterization. I think one of the drivers of this, one amongst many of the drivers of the formation of this joint committee is much of the discussion around, as Senator Murphy said earlier, around how to treat violent offenders, particularly with the rash of gun offenses that have been occurring in and around the city of Chicago. I wonder, amongst those who are incarcerated for UUW offenses, do you have the same variety of risk amongst those inmates who are incarcerated for UUW offenses?
I'm not understanding the question, Senator.
You said that earlier, that the offense doesn't characterize.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I do understand that. I still stand hold by, you know, I think a risk assessment tool should be the driver. That, you know, quite frankly, that individuals, there's a motivation for carrying a weapon. Is it to do something harmful? Is it to protect yourself? What is it for? That's not taken into account when you receive that charge and that sentence, you know? I'm not saying that it should, but if we are really looking at everybody who's not violent, you should include those individuals so that you can toss out those individuals that were getting ready to do harm as opposed to those that are getting ready to defend themselves.
So that, yeah, so particularly prior to the time that the state of Illinois had a concealed carry statute on hand, you could have people picked up on UUWs that were carrying to protect themselves. And depending on their criminal history, they could have been referred to your department.
Again, everything is case by case.
So if we were to remove total discretion from judges on those offenses, then you'd still have.
I have a high regard for judges, Senator. I think their job is almost as tough as mine.
I do as well. I have a high regard for judges, and that's why I think that we should retain some discretion amongst judges in lieu of, you know, there's been this notion of doing a swap of population. Let's identify offenses that we characterize as nonviolent offenses, and let's either stop referring those people to the Department of Corrections and start referring them into community programs on the basis of the offense, not the level of risk that that individual, whether they were just carrying a dime bag or whatever they call them now. So somebody carrying a dime bag could be a huge risk to the public based on
Correct.
other factors. And they may require reference to the Department of Corrections. Meanwhile, you could have, you know, a kid who's a straight A student who's been threatened by the gangs carrying, you know, carrying a gun who we wouldn't advise referring to.
Or conversely, you can have a shoplifter who's a violent person.
Right.
I agree. I agree.
There was some discussion of overtime, juxtaposition of dollars spent for overtime and the needed dollars to address a full implementation of a risk assessment. Is it as easy as just swapping out one for the other? I mean, you have, you have the burden right now of dealing with the population that you have. Can you just easily say, "I'm not going to have folks on overtime and I'm going to change into probation"?
You know, if I can go to Corrections 101, it, numbers matter. The population matters. It matters in the sense of where the posts are needed. And unlike many businesses, if someone at Sears doesn't show up, they may go without someone covering, someone having to cover two areas. With us, if someone doesn't show up for that post, we have to hire someone to fill that post. So it won't matter if that facility has 400 less inmates or not. If that post needs to be covered, for example, if it's the visiting room and it's a visiting day, that post has to be covered, all right? In the sense where it would save us most is obviously where the population dropped and you can start closing places. That's where you would, you know, and we're not anywhere near that, you know? What our dilemma is, as Brian explained, is that we're not keeping up with the attrition. And I want to throw this in so we understand it, that many of our prisons were built 30 years ago. They opened 30 years ago. So now, 30 years later, people are retiring at full benefit. And so it's hit us in many ways, and that's one of them. Probably about seven to 10 prisons were built about 30 years ago.
Okay. A lot of the discussion centers around population management and a lot of the reason why a lot of people who historically were not interested in addressing criminal justice reform are now interested is the costs associated with the increase in population. As we have this discussion as this joint committee, one of the things I'm curious about are to what extent the policy that has been embraced through the years has driven that population to new standards of, you know, what is the appropriate sentence for whatever the offense, whether it's murder or aggravated robbery, just a comparison of, you know, what was an adequate punishment 20, 30 years ago and what is now and what are the respective recidivism rates as a result of what we, we've called it in the Senate Criminal Law Committee, the Colleton Rule, that you can only enhance a penalty by one class level per General Assembly because it's the habit of a politician to be able to send a newsletter back to their district saying that they're tough on crime and the easiest way to do so is enhance a penalty based on a headline case that happened within their district. We've done so over decades, not in any scientific manner. So you could have, you talked about class threes and class fours earlier, and I think you would agree with me, all class threes and class fours are not of equal severity. It's really been bastardized by the policy that, you know, I point the finger inward, that we've embraced as a General Assembly.
Yeah, and I think I pointed out, but over the last 25 years, our biggest admissions have been class four possession of central substances.
One of the things that, you know, I've got my staff looking at is the enhancement that we, you know, the class fours that used to be class A misdemeanors and the class threes that used to be class fours or, you know, even the class threes that used to be class A misdemeanors because we moved a class A to a class four in one General Assembly and two General Assemblies later, somebody else had an incident in their district and we decided to make that class four into a class three. I think it's worthwhile to look at all of that data as we, as we look at, you know, population driver, to what extent that our policy that's not scientific, that's not related to reducing recidivism or having the appropriate punishment for a crime, but just related to politics, how much that is a driver of prison population.
Well, I can't answer the political end of it, but I heard Representative Zeluskin excellent interview Sunday where he talked about, we really have to look at data. We really have to look at what this information is telling us. We really have to gather, come to a consensus on what is the right avenue to take, in my opinion.
Representative Vrabeldy, for one quick follow-up.
You talked about boot camp and the amount of beds in boot camp. What is the effectiveness of boot camp? I know that's a model that's been around for decades, the military style training and push-ups and sit-ups and wake up at 5:00 AM and, and does that still work? Is there a different model that is being recognized nationally that we should be looking at besides what used to be? Because I know I've sentenced people in the past to boot camp because they were a class X delivery by a school and then we said, "Well, we'll give you boot camp." And so they had a variable sentence based on their...
I see two parts of the question. The first part of the question is, how does it affect us? If you can picture this, the boot camp program is a four-month program. So in essence, if you fill your boot camp, you will see a turnaround three times in a year. So you see that number, enter, release, enter, release. If you stop sending them to boot camp, then you don't see that discharge. Then they, people stay or it's filled with other individuals that are not boot camp. Now, the effectiveness, I think everything that I've read that I would stand by is that the boot camp is only as effective as your re-entry program, your release from that boot camp is. Someone has to follow up on that individual. And any boot camp that does that seems to do better than those that do not. That's why some states have done away with boot camps.
Thank you.
Ms. Director, I just have one question.
Sure.
We, I see that Brian has all this information handy and I see there's a gentleman back there that has all that information that he's feeding to you. We really, speaking of data, want to see your data.
Sure.
I mean, to the extent that it's there. I mean, individually, we can go on a website and know what an inmate's information is and what he's in, he or she is in there for and any format you can give a dis into it. If it's a simple Excel spreadsheet, anything, we really, it's a formal request. We can't take Brian everywhere when we talk about this stuff, so we need, we need a disk or something.
And Representative, just so I could respond, we did get your data request and our staff is working on putting it into an Excel format, downloading all of that information and it's just time-consuming to get, because it's very voluminous, as you can imagine. So we hope within the next 30 to 45 days to be able to complete that task and turn over that information to the committee so you can start extracting the information out there that you need.
Yeah, if, Brian, I hate to be pesty, but if you could do it shorter than 30 days, we'd, I mean, I...
We'll do our best, Representative.
The best you can.
That'd be great.
Okay, with that, note for the, yeah, like, exactly, you're right, Kwame. You guys have been taking too many lessons from the pension actuaries. Take your time and do what you're right. So with that, thank you for your testimony. I thought it was very good and insightful for the committee, so I appreciate it.
May I say one last thing?
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Director.
Our job is tough. We commend you on the support and, but we also, I want to take this time to tell you how grateful I am to work with the staff that we have at the Illinois Department of Corrections. They're very dedicated, professional people. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Kathy Saltmarsh. And Kathy, I should say that you were asked to testify because, first of all, I give you so much work to do that I felt it was important for you to come and talk to us today. And second of all, you are, and the counsel is the, thank you, is the, is responsible for the actual data analysis. So what I'm hopeful you'll tell us today is what you know about the department's population and what we can do to help you get more information and help us, help you help us like Jerry Maguire. So with that, I'll...
Thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity to address this committee. SPAC was statutorily created in 2009 for the express purpose of bringing to these discussions more data analysis, system-wide fiscal impact analysis, and to support your decision-making with research and analysis of Illinois-specific data. So what we try to do is pull in research from a variety of sources and a variety of viewpoints, synthesize it, and then we can feed back to you more usable, I guess, summaries of that. We also look specifically at Illinois data. We have the DOC data right now, so we're happy to slice and dice in whatever fashion the committee would deem appropriate. I'll start a little, just by kind of overviewing the handouts that we gave you. And to take a comprehensive approach to sentencing, you have to, I think, decide first off what it is you wish to accomplish. I would encourage the committee to think in terms of measurable outcomes for SPAC with the models that we're using for fiscal impact. The outcome that we are looking for is a reduction in recidivism. That's something that's measurable by data analysis. There are a lot of ways you can approach this. Do you want to just reduce the DOC population? Do you want to reduce spending on DOC? Do you want to incentivize community-based, evidence-based practices? All of those things are part of the reform discussion as it's been currently going on for a number of years. The handouts that I gave you are kind of a little bit of an example of what we can do and how we approach data. The average offender profiles came out of a SPAC meeting where one of our members noted that much of our sentencing policy is based on extreme cases. And when you legislate based on the extreme, you end up with a system that does not work very well for the average. So take a moment to look at those profiles. We broke them down by offense categories. What will jump out at you, regardless of the type of offense, is that these offenders, and these are DOC offenders, not probation offenders, routinely have failed in the education system or perhaps that system has failed them. They have criminal histories. They have recidivism patterns that are very predictable. One of the values of research, and I'm very excited to hear the committee's interest in data and research, is that it can debunk some very dearly held and sincere beliefs, one of which for many years was there are too many first-time offenders in the Department of Corrections. There are very, very few first-time offenders. There are first-time admittees who are usually there by virtue of what Senator Raul was just talking about. They began as a misdemeanor and by virtue of repeating their offense, not escalating their behavior, but repeating their offense, they then entered the felony realm. At the point where you go from being a misdemeanor to a felon, your probability of ending up in the Department of Corrections goes from zero to 50/50. So that's one area that this committee can look at. Do you want to be spending your incarceration dollar on people who are simply acting out at a relatively low level over and over again? Or is there a more effective, less costly strategy for dealing with them? I would submit, based on the research that we have, and we know a lot more now than we did 20 or even 15 years ago about what works, that you could safely keep those offenders in the community but sentence them to a program of supervision that involved risk assessment because the key to risk assessment is it identifies what is underlying the criminal behavior. The value to that is that you can program that person based on their criminogenic needs, not your offense category. What's a criminogenic need? It's a horrible term, a totally horrible term, but it's basically a factor that is identified through the actuarial assessment as contributing to criminal behavior. If I commit shoplifting in order to feed my drug habit, a risk assessment would distinguish me from somebody who is a drug user, but in fact, that drug use does not contribute to criminal behavior. So what the system, the criminal justice system needs to do is craft its sanctions to address the things that drive criminal behavior. That is, in many ways, contrary to everything we've done for many years. But what we have seen, again, in the research about risk assessment, is your outcomes are better when you use risk assessment than when you don't because it helps you avoid, and this is very counterintuitive, it helps you avoid the unfortunate outcome of overprogramming low-risk offenders because if you overprogram, you produce crime from that person. So you take a person who is at low risk of reoffending, and that does not mean they're at risk of reoffending in any particular manner. It means that based on their demographics, some dynamic factors, all of these things are built into the tool, they are identified as someone who is likely to reoffend in the future. The tool then identifies for the person who is assessing, what are the things that make this person likely to reoffend in the future? And that's what the system should program based on. Risk assessment is a key to successful outcomes and I would encourage the committee to craft some of its work in terms of outcomes because when you get down to the fiscal impact analysis, and I'm jumping around a little bit, I got away from my handouts, but one of the things that we do that is, as far as I know, we're the first state in the nation to try this, and that is a system-wide fiscal impact analysis. The reality of the criminal justice system is that most of it happens on the local level. Where you get to the state level is where you get to DOC and to the Illinois State Police. But most of the system is administered by local law enforcement, local prosecutors, local judges, and local sheriffs. So, and when we look at your, the legislative proposals that you file, we are looking for bills that do one of three things because these are the things that you do that does drive the population. You enhance a penalty. That means you add a crime to the truth in sentencing list. You take something that is probationable and make it non-probationable. You take an offense and you move it up the ladder of severity so that misdemeanor becomes a felony, the class four becomes a class three or a class two, and you limit the DOC's ability to manage its population. As Director Godina's talked about, early release programs are part of that. So if you look at the pie charts that we gave you, these are the three, you have three levers. It's not rocket science. You have three levels, levers that you as policymakers can affect with your policies. Admissions, exits, and length of stay. Admissions, who do you want to not have show up in the Department of Corrections? Who would you rather sanction at a community level? Exits, who are you willing to let out, perhaps earlier than their sentence term, based on their good behavior or other factors? And length of stay, and this is really the big one in terms of what we've been doing over the past 20 or so years. Length of stay is purely the function, as Director Godina said, of keeping somebody in prison for a longer amount of time. And we kind of, it helps sometimes to get away from talking about individual offenders and talk about the operational bed days of the prison system. A person who's in prison for six months consumes 180 bed days. A person who's in prison for six years consumes, what, 1,800, more than 1,800 bed days. So when you're talking about reducing the prison population, you need to move out six or seven of those class threes or fours to make room for just one person who's going to spend six years in the Department of Corrections. So I hope that you'll go from that to thinking about what is your return on that extra year of incarceration? We would urge you to think of it in terms of, again, what is your outcome? The discussion of the elderly population, that's a tough one because you can't go back and take finality away from victims very easily, but the reality is that for, the law of diminishing returns does kick in when an offender reaches middle age and your public safety return on each year of incarceration grows smaller and smaller. Those are all the types of data questions that we can help you slice and dice. Those are all the types of data questions that we can help you slice and dice. Representative Zaleski asked me to address some of the same things that Director Godina has addressed. The state of the system. I don't think that there's anybody in the room who believes that we should continue to spend $1.3 billion a year on incarceration. I think everybody in this room recognizes that incarceration plays a valuable role in our punishment system, but we need to be really clear about what it does well and what it cannot do well. It incapacitates violent offenders very well, and that is a value to society. It's not such a great deterrent. It's not such a great rehabilitator. It is a great driver of our state budget, but hopefully, we can deal with that a little bit more effectively. So the overuse of incarceration takes resources away from other things that can affect the crime rate, such as investing in early childhood interventions, such as using evidence-based, community-based sanctions. And let me just define for you what evidence-based means in terms of the SPAC analyses that we do. It means that we're looking at a program that has, over time, been evaluated by objective evaluators. By that I mean organizations or people who have no direct role in the funding or the administration of the program, and it has been found to consistently generate positive outcomes, generally measured in terms of reduced recidivism. I will give you an example of one thing, and I'm thrilled that you're hearing, from the local jurisdictions, because one thing that the local jurisdictions do, have been doing, and some of them, Lake County is one that does it very well, is the use of cognitive behavioral therapy, a longstanding evidence-based practice, one of the cheapest evidence-based practices, and the only evidence-based practice that directly addresses how someone who's committed a crime makes decisions. When they are confronted with a trigger, if that's drug use or the peers that they hang out with back home, how will they make their decision in the future? Time and time and time again, over about 25 years, what research has found is that those who successfully complete cognitive behavioral therapy, whether in a probation setting, or in the Department of Corrections, or an alternative, consistently have significantly lower recidivism rates. That's a practice that could be implemented, that this group, as you look at sentencing, could easily support the use of. It's a practice that requires qualified people to administer it, but those counselors that DOC was talking about for risk assessment can also do cognitive behavioral therapy. There are interventions that fall outside of the criminal justice system that have consistently been shown to reduce the likelihood of criminal behavior in the future. They are all much cheaper than incarceration. One of the things that SPAC brings to the table that's a little bit unique, and here's where you can all glaze over, because it gets really technical, but I'll try to keep it untechnical. We started about two years ago with working with what's called the Results First Cost-Benefit Analysis Model, and I think an important point from the fiscal standpoint is understanding that you cannot just look at how many dollars you spend, you must also look at what you're generating with those dollars. And by that I mean, if you have $10,000 in public safety money to spend, how should you spend it to get the best outcome? Well, that's what cost-benefit tells you. It tells you for each dollar spent on a certain intervention, you can expect a return on that investment of X number of dollars, and the model that we use also runs scenarios to tell you the percentage likelihood that you'll get the positive outcome. That model, again, uses recidivism as its performance measure. So we can bring to the table for this committee something that helps you judge outcomes as well as costs, so that three years, five years, and 10 years from now, we're not sitting in this committee room talking about the same problem. One of the things that we did, based on a comment Senator Raul made at the last SPAC meeting, is we started to take a look back at truth in sentencing enhancements and also how crimes become non-probationable. Many of them, as most bills are, passed on the floor without a lot of debate and unanimously. Most of them responding to a trigger crime. But what was really interesting is back in, I think it was '87, when truth in sentencing was first passed, the debate on the floor was, "Illinois prisons are too overcrowded. We're on the verge of a federal judge telling us we have to let people go, so we will pass truth in sentencing in order to access federal grant money to build more prisons." Now, thankfully, the analysis went on to conclude that the federal money being offered was insufficient to cover the costs of building those prisons and maintaining them. But we have the policy that was based on the desired outcome at that time of building more prison space. So I think that the function that we can serve for you, and I hope that this is just the first of many discussions, is doing that type of slicing and dicing of fiscal and data sets that we currently already have. SPAC is unique in that the way our statute is drafted, if we request data from a unit of state or local government, they must provide it. So what we currently use, which is another thing that Representative Zaleski asked me to address, we currently use DOC data, criminal history reporting information data, circuit clerk data. We reached out to the Public Health Department and got data on non-fatal and fatal overdoses in preparation for the heroin task force. If we do not have sufficient Illinois data, we look to the National Incident-Based Reporting System, which is a much better gauge of crimes that are actually happening as opposed to arrests that are made. And thankfully, Rockford reports into that system. It's the only Illinois community that does. And as we go down the road and identify more data sources, we will continue to bring them in and match them up with what we already have. So I hope that you can view us as a resource. I think that one of the statements Senator Nolan made was very important, that we have to come back every several years, and we have to look at what we have actually purchased with our tax dollars. Have we purchased lower recidivism rates? Have we brought our incarceration rate down to be more consistent with our crime rate? Have we seen offenders who are nonviolent diverted into community-based programs? Have we saved our prison beds for the people that we really do need to incapacitate? So as you go forward, I hope that we can be a resource, and I will tell you that the things that you can do to help us with our work, and I think that Gladys Taylor touched on this, we have very siloed sources of information. We have a kind of odd probation system, and, you know, just to be clear, the other thing I should have said at the very beginning, I think that you need to talk about corrections, not only in terms of the Department of Corrections. You need to also consider probation, because about 50% of our felons are sentenced to probation. You need to consider the effect on local jails of the changes you make that are going to help the DOC population. You need to consider the alternatives to incarceration that currently exist. So going forward, what would be helpful, the most helpful for SPAC, is probably what's the equivalent of a central data warehouse, that all of the data systems that are connected to criminal justice report into one location, that there are enough qualified people to analyze that data, clean it, and match it, so that we can give you quick turnaround in real-time analysis. You should hear definitely from the Criminal Justice Information Authority, who is working on, has been working on, that type of project now for many years, and work with the courts to come to some agreement on an acceptable way for them to make their probation data accessible. Probation's kind of odd, because the court not only imposes that sentence, they also administer that sentence, and therefore, probation offices have a significant amount of case-level data that would be very helpful in judging outcomes. Finally, I hope that you will hear from more local jurisdictions, because I will tell you that there are inspiring stories out there. It's not all bad news. First of all, the Crime Reduction Act has been successful in terms of Adult Re-Deploy Illinois and in terms of the implementation of risk assessment, but there are local jurisdictions, McLean County, Lake County, Winnebago County, that are putting into practice, with significant success, some of the evidence-based programs that have been the strongest over the years. And there are counties that have incredible data collection sources. DuPage County, the circuit clerk, his words to me when I talked to the data guy was, "Oh, my God, we've been collecting this data for so many years, and nobody's ever been interested in it." So there's a lot of data out there, but you need--
Kathy, you're a special kind of person, right?
I talk too much. I will now take questions.
I have real two quick ones, then Representative Duncan, I don't know if he bails us. Probation.
Yes.
We will be inviting Chairperson Nolan, and I think we need to hear from AOIC. So at some point, we'll be asking them to come. Now, whether they cooperate, I don't know.
I hope, I think they, I hope they will.
But if you could prepare a list of, wishlist of what you want to see from them, so we can gently get them ready for that, I think it'd be helpful.
Well, one thing that I will say is, I'm not sure the AOIC collects the data that your committee would need, but the probation offices in 102 counties do. And that's where we run into, and it hasn't been a real issue, we are just starting our outreach to individual probation offices, but they cannot share their data unless the chief judge signs off on it. So to, and maybe that's where AOIC could help facilitate a discussion of what would be an appropriate data-sharing system for us to be able to get the case-level data that would be very helpful.
Okay, thank you.
But yes, I will prepare a list.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy. Representative Duncan, Chairperson Nolan in the chair for a moment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and, you know, Kathy, I can listen to you and your analysis on the numbers for as long as they need to be listened to, because you've been very enlightening, certainly to myself, to the Black Caucus here in the state at our retreat, and really, the genesis of this has been, because so many of us legislators have, you know, we get a reaction or a situation in our respective district, or whatever the media puts out there, then we react legislatively, and grossly ill-advised approach to being tough on crime. The mayor here, looking to mandate any and everything that he can't control with a very incompetent police superintendent here in the city of Chicago, Gary McCarthy, has no clue, no strategy and approach of how to resolve crime. And so he comes to Springfield with legislation of mandatory minimum sentencing, again, ill-advised and grossly over the top. So I'm happy that this particular committee is looking at prudent ways in which we can revise our criminal justice system, especially as a waste of sentencing. My question to you is, what states, Georgia, Texas, Pennsylvania, what states in this country have actually figured it out and gotten it right, that you can speak on, or a reference point that we can take advantage of?
Well, as a matter of fact, that is also one of my handouts. The last page--
Well, hand it out.
The last page of your packet is a chart of justice reinvestment states, and we are included on that chart, which is kind of erroneous, as we were not chosen to participate. I think at this point, the count is around 29 states that have engaged in comprehensive criminal justice reform, that has been under the purview of the Justice Reinvestment Initiative, that those states engaged in a process where there was significant analysis of the drivers of their population, and then significant discussion of how to address policy solutions that aimed directly at those drivers. It should be the last page.
Of which one? You have about four handouts.
Oh, you know what? I've just been informed that that is not in your packet, but we will get that to you. So yes, there is a laundry list of states and what they have done in terms of comprehensive reform. I would caution this committee that enacting a change that is not based on the drivers of the Illinois population is probably not going to seem like much of a reform three years from now, but we can help you with looking at the drivers and crunching that data for you. Broad categories, the states have generally looked at improving community-based sanctions, alternatives to incarceration. They have looked at truth in sentencing and mandatory minimums. That's not always bringing them down for some of the worst crimes, it's bringing up mandatory minimums. They have looked at sustainability, and that has been phrased in terms of collecting data and analyzing it over time, so that you can judge your outcomes effectively and And I think there was one other that's now escaping me, but, so yes, we can give you, and there was the most recent, you know, there's a lot of research now that generally takes the form of hundreds of pages of reports--
Sure.
--but there is actually an outcome evaluation of the JRI states. Some of them have succeeded, and some of them have failed, because the underlying concept is you take money out of the Department of Corrections and you reinvest it in community-based sanctions that are more effective. But you have to really, really retool how people end up in the DOC population and the number of people who are maintained in that population in order to realize enough savings to reinvest. So some of the states are making upfront investments, which I know we all agree is would be a very tough thing in Illinois, in some of these strategies, and then judging the outcomes after three years of data collection.
Sure. So with that particular chart of those 29 states that are trying to be responsible and paying attention to the numbers, what are some of our immediate, what would be some of our immediate hurdles to implement a massive change in our criminal justice code, one, how we criminalize individuals, and how we reconfigure our process of locking people up versus evaluation, probation, and real rehabilitation?
That's, I can't answer that very comprehensively. I think the place to start, and you kind of touched on this with Director Godina's, is how we address violent versus non-violent crime. There are a number, and we use the offense as the proxy for the offender, and that's one of the things that's happened over time, is when, you know, 25 years ago, the kind of baseline of sentencing was, you are to be sentenced proportionately based on the offense characteristics and the offender characteristics. As we've gotten more punitive, we've gotten away from considering offender characteristics, and that takes the, it kind of takes the form of, most cases being resolved by plea bargain. So there is no pre-sentence investigation. There is not a lot of mitigation presented of prosecutors and defense attorneys agreeing to what the conditions of probation should be. One of the reforms that McLean County instituted was, they can't do that anymore. They can agree to a probation sentence, the conditions of probation are to be set based on the risk assessment done by the probation department. We have tended to expand our list of conditions of supervision based on the offense, whereas, which has ended up with people who are domestic violence violators having a four-year MSR term, and people who are murderers having a three-year MSR term--
What's an MSR?
--when they get released, a mandatory supervised release. So when we looked at the drivers, and we do have, we have reports on our website, I didn't want to inundate you guys with too many pages, but we have some additional research that's not on our website. If you're interested, we will provide everything that we have. But when we looked at the basic drivers that we identified from doing a retrospective analysis of crime and sentencing, we saw that there were three kind of broad areas. One was the return of MSR violators to DOC. We also looked at probation as a sentence, and then we looked at length of stay. So starting there, the things that drive an increased length of stay, and this is something that we went, when we were in the clear commission process, we attempted to look at the use of aggravating factors and extended terms, because a Class X felony doesn't mean what a Class X felony used to mean, because there are a variety of aggravating factors that up your sentence from 30 years to maybe 35 or 40 or 50 based on special circumstances. So one question for this committee is, do you want to look at how you classify crimes, and rather than saying you have a Class 1 with all these aggravating factors, at some point, should that Class 1 be a Class X, and you have a term that is for a Class X felony? You could probably look at the use of second and subsequent offenses as a threshold for ending up in the Department of Corrections, and at what evidence tells us about low-level offenders who are going to be recidivists but will never, ever raise a hand to another citizen, how to deal with them. Looking at those who are drug-involved and mental health, and have mental health issues, the Department of Corrections is not an effective delivery system for either substance abuse or mental health treatment. But it is-- But it is critical that both of those things be available to people who need them if they are incarcerated. So there are a variety of moving parts that you could choose to address. Again, you have a short time span, so I would strongly suggest that you look at things that you can affect in the short term, and things that will, and it's going to take time, unfortunately. You have 49,000 people in DOC, and you can't stop feeding them. So you have to look at a continuum of several years to realize the benefits of the changes that you might make.
Sure. And that's why I'm, I think members on this committee are keenly aware of the short window that we have. This is a gargantuous charge. And we've been, one thing we've, we've been doing consistently is getting it incorrect with over-incarceration of nonviolent, low-level offenders who are mentally challenged and, or who are drug-addicted. Many of us, even my own family members. So this is near and dear to a lot of us, but we want to get it right. And so what I would charge Department of Corrections, the states, the various states' attorneys, the defense teams, and the prosecutors, and your wonderful group of information as a repository for us, is to provide suggestions and recommendations, given the fact that we have, again, what, three, four months roughly, to try to figure this thing out. And I commend members here on this committee, and the speaker, and member, and the chair for, for all of the members here, for being open enough to try to figure this thing. So I think you would help us during those days that we're not here in committee, all of you who are experts in this arena, to play that active role on strong suggestions in how it is that we come up with a resolution. Because there are some solutions, there are some best practices. Anytime you have a state of Georgia, Texas, those two places alone, which were, are notorious for locking, if you jaywalk here, you're doing a five-year prison sentence 10 years ago. So I'm anxious to get to some resolve, or just sort of a checklist, if you will, of what can work here in our respective state. So thank you for being here and sharing. Last question, what is the, maybe GLC can answer this. What is the black population in DOC here in the state of Illinois?
It's high.
Oh, it's, yeah, we know that. What?
Forty-nine percent black, 12% white.
All right, okay. I want to believe you, but I would, let's hear the director who gets paid. Twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and nine. Out of, out of 49? Wow, that's about right. So over 40%. And yet, we're 14.8% of the population here in the state. Starling statistics.
One thing, one thing I would suggest, and that is considering putting together a number crunching team for this committee. And that would be, I hope we would be part of it, but including that.
You're the chair, Kathy, for doing that.
Your, your budget staff as well, possibly maybe someone from COGFA, they've all seen the cost-benefit model, by the way, and so they're familiar with that. But bringing the fiscal and the policy goals together, and being able to go through the data, and maybe summarize and give you a better picture of how it works on both levels, that would be one suggestion I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Senators Murphy, Rebelletti, and we're going to close with Chairperson Nolan. Reminder, everybody, it's 20 to 4, and we're trying to get everybody out of here by 5:00 to make trains and various forms of transportation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kathy, the, part of what we're talking about here, as I had discussed with the director before, is this sort of, if you're gonna, if you're going to, and I guess that's still an if, but if you're going to address violent gun crimes with sentence enhancements, making room in our overcrowded system, I think the conversation with the director was, you know, in the context of primarily Class 3s and Class 4s, which seems logical, they're lesser offenses. But, and sir, if you want to step up, certainly, but I was under the impression that 3s and 4s make up most of our DOC population. And what I'm seeing here in the SPAC numbers is that combined 3 and 4 make up 21% of our population.
You have to distinguish between admissions and stock population, and I'm sorry, I did not, I didn't explain my second pie. Going back to the three levers, admissions are people who come into DOC, exits are obviously people who leave DOC. Those, though, that population is largely 3 and 4s. But where you see the length of stay effect is in that second pie, which is the snapshot of the DOC population on June 30th of each year. And that shows you that long-term prisoners make up the majority of the population over time. So, and that, so that gets back to the idea of, how many beds do you need to save in order to make room for enhanced penalties on more violent offenders? If you do the math on the pies, you see that there are not enough 3s and 4s in the stock population over time to give you enough beds to accommodate significantly longer sentences for more violent criminals. Now, that's not an insurmountable problem. You just need to, to think through, what's the best long sentence for a violent criminal? And, you know, there's a lot of ways to kind of slice and dice that. And there's a lot of discussion. I mean, let's be really clear. We've had a downward trend in violent crimes over the past 10 years. Many states have successfully reduced their use of incarceration by up to 20%, and seen a concomitant reduction in crime. What's happened in Illinois is our crime rate has gone down by eight, about 8%, but our incarceration has gone up by 14%. So maybe that's one thing, one way this committee could think about it, is how do we get our use of incarceration to be more consistent with our crime rates? But that is prospective, and your long-term prison population isn't going anywhere. Your Class 1s, Class Xs, and the murderers aren't going anywhere anytime soon, although the Class 1s and Xs will be released. So that's another thing that's kind of been a mantra of ours in sentencing, is we feel comfortable talking only in terms of nonviolent offenders. And indeed, the vast majority of violent offenders age out. So if they've been in prison for 40 or 50 years, the likelihood that they're going to recommit a crime when they get out is very small, by virtue of their maturity level, I guess. But that's one of the things that you can, that we can help you work through, is if you want to enhance a sentence for a really bad crime, how far do you go before you reach that point where another year really doesn't serve a big public safety? It doesn't produce a public safety benefit, but it might produce a retributive benefit. It might produce an incapacitation benefit. But I think a rule of thumb, and this is, you know, the, there've been research reports in the past year that pretty much conclude that we've over-incarcerate to the extent where we're getting a very, very small to no public safety benefit for the dollars that we spend on the incarceration.
Well, and I don't want to, you know, pour cold water on your cost-benefit approach by saying that I like it.
Scott Wilbrink liked it.
You know, every once in a while, ideas I like around here don't go that far. So I don't want to stop this one by endorsing it. You mentioned some other states that have had that concomitant drop in their prison population with their crime rate, which, which we haven't been able to do. Are there a couple of them that you could cite that are largely similar to Illinois? That have some sort of glaring differences in their approach that maybe explain their better result that we could use and possibly replicate here as members of this committee?
Well, one of the state that is closest to Illinois, and I will, I will preface this by saying that we don't have enough data over enough time to say that this is going to be a continual, without some ups and downs. But one state that would be worth looking at is Ohio. And one of the things that they've done, and I don't know that this is, has been done to the same extent in other states, and this also brings up a point I should have mentioned earlier. One of the key components, and one of the things that SPAC could really use, is evaluation of some of the programs that are funded. And this came up, this is a key part of the cost-benefit model, having those evaluations. One of the things that Ohio did was it procured evaluations from the University of Cincinnati of all 34 correction systems programs that they funded. That was purely for the purpose of deciding what to no longer fund. And what they found out of the 34 is that, I think, and this is an estimate, I'm recalling the graph in my mind, but I can, I can get it for you. They found about eight or nine programs that they were paying for that increased recidivism. So their tax dollar investment was having a negative return. There were three or four that were neutral in terms of outcomes. They decided to continue to fund those and give them a chance to improve. And then they fully funded the remainder, which had consistently, over time, produced reduced recidivism rates. We don't have any evaluations, really, of our DOC programs. Gladys didn't mention this, but there's, right now, we're applying for a, Illinois is applying for a Second Chance Grant, and one of the components of that is money for evaluations. Evaluations are really the only objective way that you have of knowing whether something you've done is a success, or maybe needs a little tweaking, or has failed miserably. So an investment in evaluations would be incredibly helpful at this point. So Ohio also implemented risk assessment. They've also revamped their programming based on risk assessment. So they've done a lot of cutting-edge stuff. I think another state that has been out front on, in terms of justice reinvestment, is Kentucky. Oddly, Kentucky. But, and actually, I met one of the legislators who had been involved in that process, and, you know, they underwent a pretty rigorous analysis, and then a very rigorous negotiation period. And some of the things, you know, they're off the table, because they are so politically unpalatable that they wouldn't be able to pass. But their bills tend to be a combination of some sentence enhancements at the top end, and a lot of re-categorizing and restructuring sentencing at the mid and lower end. For SPAC, our, one thing that we would say is, and this is the last handout that you have, it's a, it's a really kind of compressed example of cost-benefit. The one thing that we can help you with is if you succeed in realizing real savings as opposed to just avoiding costs, there is always going to be a slight uptick in certain types of crimes, usually drug and property crimes, when people are released from prison. So the public safety goal has got to be understanding how much you have to invest of what you save to mitigate that. And that's what our model can help you with. And in page three of the cost-benefit, kind of gives you some hypothetical scenarios. Assuming a release of 3,200 people from DOC, we assumed 3,200, because that's four housing units, what would you likely see? And how should you invest the money that you're taking out of the DOC budget, were that to occur, to mitigate public safety? Because one of the things that happens, and we haven't ever quantified this, is as you divert money away from community, from diversion programs, and even from some of the non-criminal justice interventions that actually affect crime rates in order to pay for incarceration, you will also see increased crime and increased recidivism, because those programs become starved for funds. So it's a balancing act, and we're, we would love to help you guys stay on the balance beam and, you know, execute that dismount at the end of your six-month period with great flair.
Very good, very good. Thank you, Kathy, I appreciate it.
Representative Rebelletti, followed by Chairperson Nolan.
Kathy, one of the things that struck me was you talked about certainty in sentencing as an important basis for how we customize what we think that people should do as far as probation or incarceration. There's not a lot of certainty in sentencing with probation, is there? And I think you know where I'm going at, where we have in some counties that are over a million, that judges look at probation one way, and in 101 other counties, they look at it in a different way. So where truth in sentencing comes in is when some judges do not sentence people to prison when they probably should have went, and then we end up with dead police officers, people shooting up parks, the body counts that we see unfortunately every week here in the city. That's where I think truth in sentencing comes from, is, is there an importance of some certainty in sanctions at probation, where maybe there's mandatory jail before we step up into, into prison? Is there something that you have seen that would indicate that we should look at that as an alternative?
I think that the, what we saw in our probation analysis was that people who successfully complete are less likely to recidivate. I think probation is a largely misunderstood sentence, and you're absolutely right, it is not administered with any consistency across the circuits. A change in chief judge can result in a change in probation practices sometimes. So what research tells us is that for nonviolent offenders, swift and certain sanctions are more effective than longer, harsher sentences. So I think there's a lot of work to be done there. I think there's a lot that's going on in probation departments that are, I mentioned some of them earlier, that this committee could learn what their experiences have been, and learn what they would need to support further implementation of the strategies that work. There will all, I think there will always be people who are inappropriately sentenced.
There's no doubt about that. When humans are involved in any activity, there's going to be error, and I can appreciate that. When you deal with sentencing a judge, or a prosecutor, or a public defender, nobody knows who's going to become the person that kills the family of five, or the person who goes on to be a productive member of society. And that's where the risk analysis portion comes in. And that's where, I know we'll talk, I'm going to talk to John Mackey about this, the HOPE program, which is dealing with swift and certain sanctions on probation, so that you don't have as much change in 102 counties where you see ones always send to DOC, where one is never sent to DOC, where if we made it more uniform, then maybe a first violation is a weekend in jail, because you didn't go get your evaluation. Something along those lines, where people know, look, pack your toothbrush, you're going to go in, because you didn't do something. Not where it can be sentenced to more probation, or terminate your probation, or, so do you see what I'm saying in that, where we get to that point?
I think you're, I think you're talking about kind of setting forth a framework in which local jurisdictions can work. And I think what we've seen, and when we look at problem-solving courts, is that the locals know their population pretty well. And what we've seen, I'm sure you'll hear from adult redeploy, is when local jurisdictions engage in the type of planning that adult redeploy sites engage in, they can successfully address a lot of different types of offenders. One of the things I think this committee would be well-served to look at is eligibility for diversion programs, because we tend to cut it off based maybe on offense, or based on criminal history. And again, if what you're doing is ultimately cutting off the most effective sentence, then you're inhibiting the ability to get positive outcomes from the sentencing system. So I hope that in addition to the AOIC, you'll hear from some probation officers who are engaged in some of these programs. But, I mean, the, when you look at the universe of people that we deal with, you know, there were, I had Nate pull together the felony arrests. There were close to 100,000 felony arrests in Illinois in fiscal year 2013. Most of those, you know, they're not going to end up in the Department of Corrections. There were 275,000 misdemeanor arrests. So one question that I think pops up by virtue of our offender profiles is, is there a point in the system where we can deal with misdemeanor offenders differently? And with no DOC costs hovering, could we actually look at some probation strategies so that if you, if a judge sees this retail thief for the fifth time, maybe that's the point at which the red flag goes off, and the probation department should be called in to do a risk assessment and an evaluation, and figure out what's driving that behavior? Because if we even save 10 recidivism events from that retail thief, we've saved millions of dollars systemically. So I think there's a lot of, there are more questions than I have answers for. I think as policymakers, you need to do everything that you can to ensure the proper use of probation as a sentence, and the proper use of DOC as a sentence. And I think you should also hear from states' attorneys, some of whom have fantastic diversion programs, but also hear from law enforcement, not from the point of view of the horror story. stories, but from the point of view of the fact that it all starts with them. And there are even arrest-level and contact-level diversion programs that can help divert people from the system. I think, you know, taking off my SPAC hat and just talking as, as an attorney, I promised myself I wasn't going to share my personal views, but I, as, and I, and I did, you know, I worked in the criminal justice system, in the trial and appellate and post-conviction levels. One of the things that I think we should all be concerned about is the fact that the system is losing legitimacy in the eyes of the public. So one thing that this committee can do is help restore that by looking really at effective sentencing and fair sentencing and proportionate sentencing. And I will look forward to working with you as you do that. And thank you.
Thank you, spokesperson Rebelletti.
And SPAC member. I forgot to acknowledge, we have two SPAC members, Senator Raul and Representative Rebelletti.
Senator Raul and Chairperson Nolan, and then we do have three more witnesses. So if we could just try to be as brief as possible.
I'll try to be as brief, brief as possible, but, but I'm, I'm about as good as Kathy at doing that.
I'll work on brevity.
One of the things that I, I think it's, it's in our interest to, to avoid is, is to do too much bucketing. And when I, when I say that, and I'm, I'm not talking about just bucketing in the different offenses, but bucketing of opinions of members of the committee. So while I may say something that, you know, we, that we be too careful to sweep some folks into the Department of Corrections that maybe ought not be swept into the Department of Corrections, I do also realize that we do have, notwithstanding the decline that you referenced with regards to the violent crime rate, we do have a serious crime problem. I know certainly in my, in my neighborhood, in and around me, where, where the last two, three years, you know, had a drive-by shooting of a boy the same age as my son across the street from my home, shootout at the other end of the block, and just a couple of weeks ago, a 17-year-old boy shot two blocks away. So we do, notwithstanding my tone on some of these issues, I do want to see some of these perpetrators and would-be perpetrators that prey upon our communities sent to the Department of Corrections.
Absolutely.
And some may misinterpret some of the things that I advocate for as being inconsistent with that. So while others have expressed views that are similar to mine, I'm, I'm not one here to, to throw rocks at the superintendent or any, anybody else. I think what we ought to be here for is examining data-driven solutions. And really, I just want to reiterate the, the utilization of, of risk assessment, not only once folks are in the Department of Corrections, but, you know, we, we talk often about reentry and about risk assessment and, in, in population management, but risk assessment in, in the decisions that are made as to who should go to the Department of Corrections in the, in, in, in the first place.
There are some states that are doing that, very few, but a few.
As well as for, you know, pre-trial, pre-trial detention.
Yes.
But I can't avoid just commenting on this conversation of swift uncertainty and, 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 because the tone of this committee seems to be, again, this, this need for a, a trade-off, to do something about violent crimes and, and, and to make room for us to do something about violent crimes, when I think it should be a bit different. I mean, I think it should be looking comprehensively at criminal justice reform and how we should for, on a long-term basis, not as a short-term fix to, to, to newspaper headlines, change our criminal justice system with an emphasis on sentencing. And I'm glad, you know, Dennis and I have been getting closer and closer together over the years, and I'm glad he mentioned, you know, HOPE as one of the things where, you know, you can't just talk about probation in a generalized way, because probation is utilized different ways in different, different places. And swift and certain can be used as a part of probation as, as much as it can be used as a mechanism for truth in sentencing or mandatory minimums. I want to caution against the emotion that drove the federal prison population on, under the theme of swift and certain and, and truth in sentencing, that everybody's now, some 20 years later, having a different set of emotions about. And as we go forward as this committee and as this General Assembly, be cautious that we don't embrace the same philosophy that was used for crack cocaine, although there's a difference between crack cocaine and possession of a gun. The lessons learned from, from a couple of decades ago, or I guess it's more than a couple of decades ago, can be applied to this discussion as well. So while I say absolutely, send people to prison who belong in prison, let's be scientific about it, let's not do the one shoe fits all. You know, I, I've argued this, and I've, I've been told, well, you're talking about the one-offs, you know, the one-offs that we can address with prosecutorial discretion. You know, I, I understand that some people have some level of distress, distrust for the utilization of judicial discretion, but we have our system, right? You know, and, 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 and there has been reason in some cases to have distrust for a certain exercise of prosecutorial discretion, or lack of, lack thereof. So as we have this discussion on swift and certain and making sure we're reacting to violent crime, I'd just like to caution everybody just to, I'm glad that this gives SPAC the opportunity to talk about data and talk about tools that have been used throughout the country, because quite frankly, SPAC has been trying to have this conversation for the last few years. But, you know, the General Assembly has not been listening. And so I think this gives us a great opportunity to, to listen, and let's not just reduce what we do here, Mr. Chairman, to, to just a, a, a quick window fix to address violent crime. Let's, if we're, if we're addressing criminal justice reform, let's, let's, notwithstanding our short window, because we're not going to be able to accomplish everything during the window of time that this committee has been given to operate. But I'm, I'm, I'm concerned with just some of how I think the conversation is developing here. But I'm encouraged by the fact that we're, we're beginning to talk about data and tools.
And to that end, Senator, I would hope that my opening comments might assuage some concerns that you have regarding the ongoing, what I hope will be the ongoing purpose and function of not only this committee, but a future committee, perhaps SPAC, as we look to further empower them and in their mission, and in their ability to come back to other committees like this, joint committees like this, to do just what you're asking. And that is to take a more circumspect view of what we're doing with respect to sentencing. So that said, I have just a, a couple of quick questions. I realize we have two more witnesses that we do need to hear from, three more, excuse me, lay my last, so we have three more witnesses. Very quickly, Kathy, I see in your report, specifically with respect to the page, page entitled "Illinois Results for First Cost Benefit Analysis," I note in the footnotes that, and I was going to ask, what type of methodology, what type of modality do we use to arrive at the conclusions you do so here with regard to the benefits to taxpayers, to other beneficiaries, and other indirect benefits? Okay, I see that you direct our attention to a website. I would like to know if that website is, will offer information specific to the state of Illinois. Do you know?
That website does not. Let me, let me explain exactly what WISIP is. WISIP is the Washington State Institute of Public Policy. It is a legislative body, and it does cost benefit analysis and is the, have, they've developed the model over the past 20 or so years that is now being implemented in Illinois. When we reached out to the results first project to request their technical assistance, it was because we believed that the model that they had was the best suited for our purposes, primarily because it has been used in the legislative arena for about 15 years, and in the budget arena. In Washington, the criminal justice budget is based about 80% on cost benefit analysis and 20% for discretionary funding, and the outgrowth of that has been that over time, Washington State has seen better recidivism rates, crime rates, and cost controls than what we've seen here in Illinois. When we took on that model, we took on the, the task of populating it with Illinois-specific data. And kudos to the Department of Corrections, because their data is the easiest to get and incorporate into the model. What we have found is we've gone along, it comes populated with Washington State cost data. So by that I mean it has a cost figure for policing of $600. That is the average cost of police involvement in an average incident. Obviously, a detective investigating a homicide is going to be a little bit different. But this is, this is averages and a broader picture. So we have populated that data with DOC costs, where look, where the Pew team actually is going to be here at the end of the month to sit down with DOC and calculate marginal costs. We've reached out to sheriffs on jail costs, so we have a lot of Illinois data in it. But we've come to the conclusion, as we've gone through it, that the Washington State costs are consistent with what we see in our system. And indeed, all of the states that are implementing it have had the same experience. So we are populating it with Illinois data. I will tell you, from a budget perspective, one of the startling things, and believe me, I, I was not a budget-type person until we, I took this on, is that unlike private industry where a, a corporation is very aware of the marginal costs of everything they do, governments tend not to calculate marginal costs. So when I have reached out to several probation offices, they, my, the response I've gotten to the question, do you calculate marginal costs, is we would love to, but we don't have the capability to do that. So one of the things that Nate will be doing is sitting down with some probation offices to work out how we can help them calculate marginal costs. And we are looking statewide. And that means there's a lot of concern about Cook County skewing everything, but there's ways that we control for that. And amazingly, the Cook County figures are not all that different when we've gotten them from several different counties. So right now, I would say we are probably maybe halfway to two-thirds way complete with Illinois data, and hopefully we'll be generating our first cost benefit report for you guys probably in the next 60 days.
Very good. I would echo the co-chairs' sentiments, we, sooner the better.
Yes.
Given the limited duration of this committee, we want to be able to work with that data as, as, as soon as possible. And thank you. And again, I want to thank you for your cogent and lucid testimony here today. I have one last inquiry, and that is, you know, early on in my opening comments, again, I made this, offered this rather simplistic connection between our education, our healthcare sys, education system, our healthcare system, and our, our criminal justice system, and how if we're not empowering one, we're going to be, to be dependent on another, and then ultimately, the incarceration option here. With respect to the cognitive behavioral therapy approach and community-based sentencing, you know, when I stop to think about what I really mean when I'm talking about education, I'm talking about reaching out to those kids who may have cognitive or other developmental disabilities, who ultimately act out and require mental health services. And that's what I mean by medication and, and healthcare. What have, what, what context can you provide us relative to what is currently occurring, reaching out earlier as opposed to later, in helping to provide that cognitive behavioral therapy within our education system, so that we don't have to deal with it in our criminal justice system?
Okay, let me, let me clarify, first of all, what cognitive behavioral therapy does. It's not really a disability or a mental illness tool. It is a curriculum, essentially, whereby someone who is making antisocial decisions or displays antisocial attitudes is helped to come to the point where they're making pro-social decisions. So cognitive behavioral therapy is used in some schools. It's used in therapeutic settings in terms of psychology, and sometime with, in terms of medical treatment. It's used in, it's supposed to be used in all of the probation offices, but I think that's sometimes a, a function of whether they have enough officers. The AOIC procured, or has encouraged probation offices to use a program called Thinking for Change. The Department of Corrections has the Hazelton Curriculum on Cognitive Behavioral Therapy. And the important thing about those two is that they are programs that have been evaluated and incorporate the core concepts. So cognitive behavioral therapy is used in a variety of settings. People from TASK will tell you that some of the people that they are, are involved with managing are doing cognitive behavioral therapy. And the reason that it improves outcomes, and this is kind of a nuanced thing, but if you, and, and I'll use it in the context of DOC programming, if you take somebody who is antisocial in their attitude towards education and put them in a GED program, you are probably wasting that GED slot. If you put that person in cognitive behavioral therapy, either before or concurrently with the GED, you're going to come out with a person who is more pro-social towards education and the, and the value of education. So that's where you kind of leverage your outcomes, if you can use cognitive behavioral therapy, to address the antisocial attitudes that many criminal offenders obviously display. And that's also, that's, even by itself, even if you don't pair it with anything else, that's when you talk about reentry, and, you know, we, we put people in prison, and that's a very antisocial environment, and they adapt to it, because we're, we are social creatures and we are adapting creatures. So we take them out of that environment, and we return them to their communities without any ability to make pro-social decisions. So if you can get them into cognitive behavioral therapy in prison, and in the WISIP model, if you go to the web, that website, you, you'll see a report, their report on what works. Cognitive behavioral therapy costs between, usually, I've seen it, a couple of, I've seen a couple of figures. The most recent is $700 to put an inmate through a cognitive behavioral therapy program. But again, the key is you have to have quality assurance, you can't just throw them in a room with a video, you have to have a facilitator who's trained, and you have to go back and look periodically at the outcomes to make sure that the program is being administered properly. I've heard in many discussions with DOC, a very strong willingness to incorporate that into their approach as they move forward, particularly with risk assessment. So that is the value of COG.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Kathy, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Zaleski and Chairman Nolan.
Mr. Mackey, Kara, you're on deck. And Mr. Rose, you're in the hole. Where you at? Is he out there? There he is.
Good afternoon. So my name is John Mackey. I am the Executive Director of the John Howard Association, Illinois's only nonpartisan prison watchdog. I'm going to echo a lot of what's been said and strongly second it. I have a little stutter, but I talk really fast, so I should be brief. fast, so I should be brief. I want to commend you all for taking your summer to look at this critical issue of examining our use of prisons, reforming our criminal justice system, and ultimately creating better public safety results for everyone. I think the reason you're here today is the reason your counterparts across the country and in the federal government are doing the exact same thing. After more than 40 years of using incarceration as a primary response to crime, a growing consensus, a diverse consensus of politicians, law enforcement, policy experts are calling that approach into question. And probably the clearest articulation of that consensus can be found in this National Academy of Science study, "The Growth of Incarceration in the United States." This is the most comprehensive, authoritative account of our use of prisons probably ever produced. After reviewing all the available evidence, from fiscal impact to impact on recidivism, the authors of this report, some of the nation's most esteemed social scientists and researchers concluded that, well, their findings were clear. By any measure, our use of prison, our use of prison is not serving the country well. And the report recommends that policymakers across the country revise criminal justice policies to significantly reduce the rate of incarceration. Now, I've distributed, this is a 400-page report, I've distributed the 11-page summary to all of you. And I also want to briefly note that the report's primary author, Jeremy Travis, will be speaking at a John Howard event in October. I want to invite you all as my guests to attend that. I will give you a table. And if you're interested, I'll try to arrange a personal meeting. But let me return to my talk. So even as this consensus is emerging, questioning our use of incarceration, I think it's still unclear what that really means for policymaking. And I also think it's created several challenges. So first, even while we're questioning and trying to improve upon our use of prison, you know, the architecture of that old, that old approach, that 40 years of policymaking remains stubbornly in place. So for instance, you know, it's very hard for me to walk into a room like this and not be immediately seen as the soft-on-crime guy. Or conversely, you know, it's very hard for a counterpart of mine to walk into a room like this and not be seen as a tough-on-crime guy. You know, I think if we're going to make progress, the first thing we need to do is abandon this kind of slogan-based thinking. The problem of crime, as you all know, is much too complicated to be reduced to any simple perspective or single solution. And I think in the place of tough-on-crime and soft-on-crime kind of slogans, a new slogan seems to be emerging, you know, and we've heard it already today, the need to be smart-on-crime. I think this is probably a good thing, but for it to mean something, something different, to help lead us forward, it can't just be another slogan that we reduce policymaking to. Instead, it has to name a process, where legislators, stakeholders, citizens, and particularly people most affected by the justice system engage in thoughtful discussion and debate. And I believe this process is starting today. I strongly second Senator Nolan's recommendations, and I want to commend Representative Zaleski for his stubborn look at this problem. And we laugh about this because we've been at odds, but I just have tremendous respect for you because that's how we're going to solve this problem. And let me be clear about why I'm here today. You know, I'm not here to peddle any easy fixes or magical solutions to the serious problem of crime. They just don't exist. I also want to be clear that my organization believes that prison has a vital role to play in protecting public safety. But consistent with the research that I mentioned, we believe that that should be a limited role. And we think that over the last 40 years, we've so overused prisons to respond to crime that it's actually harmed people. It's actually harmed public safety. It's harmed communities, particularly the communities that struggle with violence, neighborhoods like North Londale, back of the yards, Inglewoods, all communities which struggle with significantly, crippling high rates of poverty, all of which are overwhelmingly black and brown. So the second challenge I think you all have today, and as this process goes forward, is really in the nature of criminal justice itself. In a legislative context, you know, criminal justice isn't simply one of the most complicated problems you can probably face as legislators, but it can also mean almost anything. And so as a result, you can seize on a proposal that could be very good in itself. You can argue about it. You can craft legislation around it, pass laws, but then ultimately have very little impact on the actual operations of the justice system. So to avoid this, you know, I want to echo what Kathy said. And at the outset, identify measurable, practical goals you want to achieve. Essentially, do outcome-based reform. I think if you want to do that, you'll have an embarrassment of riches to choose from. But I think, along with protecting public safety, which obviously is the most important thing, I think the most practical and urgent outcome before you is to reduce prison spending. In the past 40 years, the size of Illinois's prison population has increased by about 700%, very much in line with the rest of the country. We've gone from around 6,000 inmates in 1974 to almost 49,000 inmates today. At the same times, IDOC's budget has grown from about $63 million in 1974 to $1.3 billion today. Now, adjusting for inflation and assuming my math is correct, always a dubious assumption, this means that today Illinois taxpayers spend more than three times than we did, we spend more than three times for our prison system than we did 40 years ago. So this cost figure, I think, is a really good target. Because I think while it's clear, absolutely clear, that Illinois needs to manage its justice population, prisons is without a doubt the most expensive way to do that, particularly when you compare it to community-based alternatives. But there's going to be a real challenge here. Because I think Illinois is in the unfortunate position of spending too much on our prison systems, but given how many people are in prison, we don't spend nearly enough. And in fact, there are several lawsuits that are currently in the pipe that will eventually compel Illinois to spend more money. IDOC's budget, as Director Godinez has said, has remained relatively flat for the last seven to eight years. Its population has increased, and its correctional staffing has decreased. So given its current resources, there's simply no, there's no way to safely cut IDOC's budget. The only way to reduce prison spending is to reduce Illinois's incarcerated population. So let me spend the next couple of minutes talking about some general principles, which I think could guide that. I've sent you a memo which details more concrete policies and goals. But I'll talk over some of the principles, I think, here. So as Kathy Saltmarsh said, you know, the goal here can't just, if your goal is to reduce prison spending, you can't just think about getting, you know, shortening sentences a little bit or shaving time off. The goal has to be reducing IDOC's need for annualized bed space. And that's not equivalent to an individual person, especially when you're talking about low-level offenders who often don't serve a full year in IDOC. So the reality might be to get one, you know, one bed space out of DOC hypothetically, you'll need to divert two people. But to really save money, you need to do more than divert those two people. You need to divert enough, to remove the bed space enough, so you reduce IDOC's need for housing units. That's about 800 inmates. Very hard to do. And it's going to be very hard to do, too, as you're weighing other things. It's much, much easier to increase the prison population than it is to decrease it. So if you increase admissions, if you increase penalties, it'll be easy to wash away any reduction you achieve there. The other thing is, this is simply not achievable in one fiscal year. And again, I strongly second Senator Nolan's approach of thinking about some kind of strategic planning committee. You know, this is something that Illinois should definitely do. Set some achievable goals you want to achieve and put it into a three- to five-year plan. You know, luckily, again, we don't have to reinvent the wheel here. Other states have, are doing this or have done this. There's lessons to be learned, and I'd be happy to help give those lessons to you as best I can. Now, along with the technical aspects of reducing prison spending, and I'd like to recommend that you articulate upfront and decide upon the principles and moral values that should drive our response to crime. In the last 40 years, Illinois' prison spending, our prison population has grown. The discussion around criminal justice has largely emphasized offender accountability and crime control, very important, but at the same time, given shift to or even ignored, other principles that have historically constrained our use of prison. And that includes, you know, the principles that are implied inherent in our own state constitution, Article 1, Section 11, "All penalties shall be determined both according to the seriousness of the offense and with the objective of restoring the offender to useful citizenship." In the growth of incarceration study, which I mentioned, the authors recommend four principles, which I'd like to conclude with. The first they talk about is proportionality, right? I think there's been an assumption over the last 40 years that more prison time equals more justice. And that's a flawed assumption, and it's led to the prison population we have. I think also an important component of that is, as Kathy Saltmarsh has mentioned, we moved from an offender-based system, more or less, you know, a system that would kind of diagnose the needs of an offender, to an offense-based system. And what's very clear now is that, again, crime is, it's the object of, you know, that you want to influence. You want to prevent crime. You want to deter crime. But just thinking about crime and not the person committing the crime is a mistake. So you have, so sentences have to be proportional. At the same time, they should be parsimonious. You know, prison, when you send someone to prison, you are harming that person. And that's legitimate, but it should not go beyond the bounds of what you're looking to achieve. Citizenship is another value they talk about. You know, we think about prisons as places we send people to, but in reality, they're also places for more people to return in massive, massive numbers. And our prisons, if they're to serve us well, can't be places where they undermine citizenship, where they undermine the ability of a person to participate in civic life. And finally, social justice, and this kind of wraps it all up. Prisons should be instruments of social justice, and if they don't do that, they're not doing their job. They aren't performing a legitimate purpose of punishment. This is extremely hard work, extremely complicated. You're having to balance sometimes irreconcilable goals. And if it was easy, it would have been done before now. I'm very honored to speak to you today, and I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
A statement from Representative Anthony.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I've sat here and I've listened to a lot of the talk. And before I say what I'm going to say, I just want to qualify what I'm saying. For six years, I worked for Safer Foundation. Most of you in here know that organization where we help offenders. I also was a police officer. So I'm a little torn, but I would love to challenge the committee and some of you out in the audience as well. There's a flow that I believe that if we took, it'd help us better understand the process. And, excuse me, I think that one of the first things we should do is contact the Chicago PD and set up a ride-along to actually see what goes on out there, what these men and women who put on these uniforms have to endure day in and day out. I think the thing we should do next is go to Bon Call, watch that process. Go to Cook County. If we have, if time permits, go to a smaller county to see the difference in how the procedures and process operates. Once we've done that, let's do a tour of Cook County and a smaller county if possible as well, as well as probation. After we've done that, let's tour state prison, a state prison, maybe Pontiac and Stateville. And if time permits, let's also go out and visit some of these community organizations, some in Cook County as well. Because, you know, as a cop, I put people in these jails. When I worked with Safer Foundation, when they came out, I helped give them the tools to succeed in society again. You know, I'm honored to be on this committee, and I really love this risk assessment aspect of how we determine who gets released. Because the truth of the matter is, there are criminals. There are people that literally prey on society. And one of the things that I would, I'd hope we'd be able to see if we did this police ride-along, let's go out to the open markets in Chicago and look at what's going on out here. Let's go out into, and let's not, let's not ask to go into the nice neighborhoods of Chicago. Let's go into the media, into the areas where real crime happens. Londale, North Londale. Let's go onto the south side of Chicago. Let's go on, let's go on the west side. Let's go where the crime really happens so that we can really see the issues that we're facing in this state. And I'm really, as I said earlier, I think I have a unique perspective when it comes to the criminal justice system here in Illinois, because I've been a part of it for many, 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 many years on both sides of the issue. So I'm really, I'll echo the words of Senator Raul, let's do some, let's do some real lifting here and really change the outlook of this state. Because, I mean, I look on the news night in, day in and day out, and you're seeing all these kids getting killed. You know, some in Leader Turner's district, some in Ken's district, and Leader, even in DuPage, there are murders. You know, so my thing is, let's follow that flow so that we can see the realities of what's happening out there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Representative. And there was a shooting last week on 63rd and Austin. And it was done by a Caucasian gentleman who shot accidentally, he was a felon with a gun, and he shot of another gang member. So this touches us all. And so I appreciate your comments, and they were meaningful, and they're taken to heart. Thank you, John. Thank you for your continued work with us on this. I know sometimes we don't see eye-to-eye on policy, but we've always seen eye-to-eye in a personal way. So thank you for coming today. Kara Smith from the Cook County Sheriff's Office. As you can see, the tone today, Kara, has been data-driven. We want data, 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 or a short-circuit, a robot in short-circuit that wants data. So thank you for coming, and we're interested in hearing what you have to say.
Good afternoon. I'm happy to be here. You know, I often refer to the jail as the last car on a long train, and I think we're the second to the last car with the Illinois Department of Corrections being the last car. So we see in a very bold way every day the impact of the decisions that are made throughout the criminal justice system, from arrest to prosecution to the setting of bond, and ultimately to a lot of people being in the jail. So our population today is, we have 94, 130 people in the jail. We have 149 inmates in outside counties, and we have 2,179 people electronically monitored in the community. We have 358 people in the jail that are serving a county sentence. Our biggest challenge these days is how to deal with a growing, seriously mentally ill population that we have in the jail. Last year, 2,700 people, which, based on the numbers we're talking about today, may seem small, but 2,700 people were admitted into our acute mental health unit upon admission to the jail or within seven days of being admitted. This is an incredibly challenging population to deal with. And unfortunately, both the Cook County Jail and the Illinois Department of Corrections bear the brunt of those decisions to the way we're handling the mentally ill individuals that encounter the criminal justice system. And unfortunately, I too often feel like the best place for these people to be is in the jail because they are very, very well cared for. We had an individual that we dealt with a few months ago, who while was sentenced to mental health probation in Cook County, absconded, went to, got on a bus and went to California. He was, encountered law enforcement in LA, was incarcerated there on the warrant from Cook County, which Cook County elected to extradite him on, and in the custody of the LA County Jail, removed one of his eyes so he would stop seeing the visions that he was seeing. We were alerted to that. We knew he was going to be coming back into our custody. We cared for him. While in our custody, he tried to remove his other eye. We were able to save his vision in that eye. He was found fit to stand trial in a 402 conference, was found guilty but mentally ill, and sentenced to three years in the Illinois Department of Corrections. So on a Friday afternoon, when he was going to be transported, we had a about-two-hour conference call trying to figure out how we were going to care for this man, how we were going to transfer him from our custody to theirs. And at one point, IDOC asked if they could use the same equipment we use to keep him safe in our county, which was headgear type of thing that prevented him from getting to his eyes and certain mittens that we had outfitted so he could not harm himself. So these are, you know, we see both the big-picture problems that you're going to be wrestling with and that you're fortunately dealing with, but also individual cases that are crushingly sad and difficult for all of us to deal with. But we have, our sentenced, our custodial population is relatively low for this time of year. We have a very robust population that are being electronically monitored. But as I always say, it's, and I don't say this lightly, and I share your concerns and your thoughts exactly, Representative, but it's, it's, we, the jail and the State Department of Corrections are the only people in the whole process who don't get to say no. So at the point of arrest, there's the option to arrest, to divert, although there's very few places to divert people to. The same thing with charging, the same thing with setting of bond. But when they get to the front door of the jail or they get to the front door of the prison, we have to take them and deal with those populations. So I would suggest that the other parts of the criminal justice system are very, very important to the solutions that you're going to be looking for. Because it's not, we're one big system, and too often, we act as though we're not. We act as though we have individual pieces of this pie. We act as though we have individual pieces of this pie. But I'm here to say, you know, we really need to work more cooperatively and in a more coordinated way to deal with the challenges we all face. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Kara, we talked a little bit about this prior, but you know, there's nuance and complexity in who's in your facility specifically. And we're told multiple, multiple times by various people that, you know, something like 85% of the people are there awaiting trial, and they're not there for their sentence. They're there awaiting trial. Or 30%, and we're dealing with this nonviolent versus violent delineation, which we're learning today, we're being reinforced today, that that's not as easy as it sounds. Can you, at some point, give us, A, your testimony here today, and similar to the IDOC, give us a snapshot in a data-able, in a searchable data format of who's there? Because we don't know. And we can be told by the Cook County Board President, or the sheriff himself, or the state's attorney, or the superintendent of police, but as the warden, I guess, for lack of a better word, you can tell us the best. So if you could get us that information, it would be very helpful.
The numbers are, we have 66.6% of our population are in on what we would call a, with a, at least one violent charge. But as you and I talked about, the definition of violent versus nonviolent, when it comes time to who's in a county jail, their bond is set based on not just their charge, the crime they're charged with, but after, you know, with consideration of the criminal history. So it's a very difficult question to answer, but 66.6% have a, at least one violent charge that is pending in the jail.
And but they're mostly awaiting trial, or some sort of disposition?
Yes, all but, I can, I can do the math very quickly, but probably over 90% of the people in our custody are awaiting, are pre-trial.
Have you seen an uptick in judicial thinking in terms of more electronical monitoring in the last year or so?
Yes, we, we went through a period where we had very few people on electronic monitoring, about 18 months ago to two years ago. Right now, we have a very high electronic monitoring population, probably as high as certainly I've seen it. Court-ordered electronically monitored people on bond is probably upwards of 1,600. So we're very high in that area.
And how often are the terms of the electronical monitoring violated, where you have to go get the person because they violated?
You know, I don't have the exact percentage, but it's relative, there's a high level of compliance among our electronically monitored population, fortunately.
That's good. I have no other questions. Any other members of the committee have questions? Oh, Representative Leader Turner had a question.
We're actually around the home monitoring questions. You mentioned a robust home monitoring program, and I just wanted some information on that.
Yeah, I mean, that's one of the reasons our jail population is manageable at this time of year, is that we have a lot of people on electronic monitoring.
And the violation offense, I just missed that last part.
I don't have any exact number. I'm happy to get it, but it's relatively low.
Okay, great.
Kara, when does your population get back to untenable during the course of a year? Is there a season, I guess?
Yeah, I mean, generally, in the summer months, we see a much higher jail population. We don't now, I think in large part due to a very high electronic monitoring population.
And are there offenses that you would say drive your population more than others? If we enhance, say, a gun offense, or a drug offense, or a theft offense, do you know if that has a direct effect, or do you see a correlation?
I'd have to go back and look at the numbers. I don't, you know, I don't really know.
Okay. Any other questions? Representative Rebelletti, then Chairperson Nolan.
I think you can anticipate where my kind of questioning may come. And, you know, as you're aware, and the sheriff is aware, I filed a bill to dismantle the boot camp program that you've had, and I know it's been there for 20 years. And obviously, my concern, and I've shared it with you and the sheriff in Addison, was that individuals who did not qualify for the program were being put into the program, and that we saw more than a handful of instances where people who were violent offenders were in a nonviolent program and ended up, within four months, were out on the street and causing mayhem, committing murders, armed robberies, et cetera. What steps have you taken to make sure, from, at least from the sheriff's, and I know you can't control the judiciary, you can't control the state's attorney's office, you can't control probation, but what steps have you taken to remedy that situation so that we don't have that same situation occur again?
Well, we certainly share the concern of who is being sentenced to boot camp. And the boot camp statute at the county level was, is structured in a relatively awkward way. You have to be essentially, it's almost like a three-strikes type statute, as we've talked about. You have to have a probation violation, so you have to be sentenced to an eligible offense. You have to have a previous felony conviction for which you were sentenced to probation, and you have to have had violated probation in order to get into the program. I think it, the statute was structured to mirror as best it could the way the state program works, which gives the Illinois Department of Corrections the right to reject a person so they're sentenced to a term in IDOC with a recommendation for boot camp, and gives the IDOC the ability to accept or not. So when, with the increased focus on the boot camp, what we have done is, we double, we confirm with the state's attorney's office and with the sentencing court that the person is eligible. Our numbers of people sentenced to the boot camp have dropped significantly in the last seven or eight months. We're down to, I think, under 50 people in the program, down from probably close to 200 at its height. The program's focus has shifted from, one, while we still adhere to the statutory requirements of military-style formations and physical activity, it's focused more on community restoration. So individuals in the program are learning deconstruction and with a very high focus on, on community service, and are working in distressed communities throughout Cook County, doing all sorts of community services, including taking down abandoned buildings and with the hope of instilling some skills in, in the participants in that program. We've extended the custodial portion of the program from four months, which is the minimum under the statute, to six months. And everyone who's in the post-release phase is electronically monitored for the entire period of eight months. So without, working within the current statutory framework, we've made those enhancements.
Is it your belief, or do you believe that statute allows you to object or to not receive somebody into the program? Now, obviously, you can't, like DOC, and I've sent somebody from Will County Jail, the minimalist was incorrect, DOC wouldn't take them, they come back to county, we correct it. You obviously have to take the individual. You may not put them in that program, but you take them back. Do you believe that the statute allows for, for the sheriff or a designee to go to the court and say, this is an illegal sentence, we cannot place this person pursuant to Illinois statute? Do you believe that mechanism currently exists in the current statute?
I think the mechanism exists, and I think that's what we're doing. I mean, you know, it's no secret that we struggle with data in Cook County. We're still primarily work with a paper system, and so our view has been, when a person is sentenced to boot camp, the public, or the defense attorney, the state's attorney, and the judge, who have all the information before them on eligibility, all of that does not necessarily come to us. We just get an individual and a court order. So that's why we've gone to this length, these lengths of going back to the parties to confirm eligibility if we have any doubt when we're reviewing the person's criminal history.
And I know that you said, and the sheriff had told me in Addison, that you were phasing in this restoration or the job skills portion, which I appreciate, and I hope, I see Gladys there, that, I know DOC would probably try to do that as well. It makes more sense than some of the other, the things that we're doing. What type of success rate, what type of recidivism rate are you seeing once the person completes the program? And I know there's a whole different way of violating people there than there is at IDOC. So what recidivism rates are you seeing once the person graduates the program?
You know, this focus on community restoration is very new. It's probably six months or so that we've had this increased focus. So I'm not at a point yet where we can, you know, we have recidivism numbers to share with you. We'll certainly share them as we have them, but...
And I think it would be helpful. And also, is that an additional cost for you, a burden, with obviously other deputies that are out now in the field that are making sure that the inmates are doing what they're supposed to be doing and not, and obviously not escaping or doing other things?
No, and we've had exceptionally high, you know, compliance rate of, of the boot camp participants that are working in the community. So hopefully, it's going to further the goal of reducing recidivism and equipping these individuals with some skills they may use when they're out of our custody.
And I know that we've, you and I have talked about the population, your management of the population. Is there anything that we should be looking at statutorily from a bond court position that would alleviate some of your concerns or what you're seeing there? I know that you're talking about most folks are awaiting trial. Obviously, once they're sentenced, DOC is taking them or they're being placed on probation. What are you seeing that would be helpful in guiding our journey here to helping, maybe with the bond statute or pre-trial detention?
Well, I mean, the bond statute, as we all know, is, is broad enough to justify or to support virtually any bond amount that's set. But the place I probably spend most of my time and have most concern is on, is how this system is dealing with people who are suffering from mental illness. It is, too many times, I'll see someone who is in our custody for a relatively low-level offense, what I would call a crime of survival. So something they've had to commit, a crime they've had to commit to stay alive, whether it's theft or, or criminal trespass. And they'll be in our custody for a month, or two, or three, and the case will be dropped or will be dismissed. And so that person then, at 7:00 on a Thursday night, or whatever time we happen to get the body back from court, is all of a sudden ready to be, you know, required to be released. And that puts us in a very difficult spot, especially when we have someone who we know is suffering from serious mental illness. And what, as long as we continue to do that, we're virtually guaranteeing they're going to come back. And so we are, the sheriff is extremely focused on discharge planning, particularly for these lower-level mentally ill offenders.
And once we close down mental health facilities across the state, did that, did you notice that the burden shifted to you?
Without a doubt.
No doubt?
Without a doubt.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Chair.
Thank you. Just to continue on that line of discussion, you know, I mean, you gave an example earlier. I was a little confused by your presentation earlier when you were...
I'm sorry.
Drawing our attention to a detainee, somebody who'd been released, actually, and then traveled to California, self-inflicted his wounds, and was an extreme example of the difficulty that we have with respect to mental, the mentally ill in our, in our jails. So with respect to extensive discharge planning, what recommendations might you have, we as alleged, to we, members of the General Assembly, to further assist?
Well, we, we have been, you know, we, the obstacles that we deal with are obviously...
And I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, no, I'm sorry.
But I want, I want to continue our distinction between this extreme case and the acts of survival that you're, that you're discussing. And let's, let's focus on those acts of survival. I mean, I think we could all agree that the more extreme cases require greater intervention, right? And there's a spectrum for that. But let's focus on the larger number of these individuals who are committing nothing more than an act of survival. Go ahead.
Right. Well, as I started to say, because of the absence of really meaningful services in the community, mentally ill individuals in our, in our custody get exceptional care, and they get medication and they get stabilized. But when we, the cases are abruptly dismissed or resolved for time considered served, which also happens, and we have to release someone immediately, we have to scramble to make sure that someone has medication, someone has a place to go. You know, there's the, the, we're not cutting someone loose at 11:00 at night at 26th and California. And the law doesn't give us much wiggle room there at all to, to keep someone in custody while we discharge plan for them. So we have been developing ways to better communicate with the criminal justice system that puts people in our custody, to alert them when we have individuals that are going to require more appropriate or more extensive discharge planning. So, you know, I don't think there's any, any magic answer here yet. It's just a, it's us working more as a system rather than as individual pieces of a system.
Very well. And I think we're going to have to have you come back and speak to this, because this is a multifaceted problem, there's no doubt. And the question that I'm led to is, well, how can we make it part of the court order that this individual follow through on compliance? Okay, that is to be discharged to an environment, a network, if you will, that is going to ensure that compliance and provide a support system for this individual so that we're not experiencing recidivism or, or further complications with respect to that care.
One of the things that we have established in the office almost a year ago is a phone line for families to communicate with the jail regarding mentally ill family members. It's been a remarkable avenue for communication so that we get much more timely information from families about the mental health history of people that come into our custody. So it's a 24/7 challenge.
They don't want to see them go back. Yeah. They don't want to see them return.
Right.
Yeah, to custody. So, thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your time.
Hey Kara, very briefly, you said that there, there's no, that by operation of law, you're obligated to release them immediately.
Yeah, and there's been...
Can your lawyers get us language that would change that for you?
Sure. And we, we're certainly working on that. It's, it's, there's been litigation also around someone who's, you know, that gives us an amount of time to, within which we have to release someone once you get a court order. So it's a tough problem to deal with.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a compelling case to be told to the General Assembly that if, if the person's mentally ill, they shouldn't be released onto the streets of Chicago, and we should, as general, as lawmakers, help you deal with that problem.
There might be a strong argument they shouldn't have been arrested.
True, that as well. Thank you, Kara. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you so much.
Can we get that information?
And you're going to follow up with us on the data related to, which specific piece? Everything. Everything you just told us we need in written form at some point, Kara. Thank you. Under Sheriff Raymond Rose, you're the closer today.
Again, we're, we thought it'd be good for the local officials to hear a little bit about your system, and if there's anything we can do to be helpful, so the floor is yours.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to be here and also have some input into what this discussion is. I think we, as well as, well, let me back up. As you said, I'm the under sheriff, but I'm with the Lake County Sheriff's Office. And one of the things that I wanted to try to address is the issues, and you heard some of that from Kara, and I'm going to not repeat everything, but I want to emphasize some of the things and how that impact on the services, especially with adult corrections or the Lake County Jail. And one of the things that we started with when we first started talking about these issues today was this whole issue of the criminal justice system and this review. And I know you only have a few months that you're looking at this, but one of the things that I wanted to try and talk about is how significant this issue is and how, as the senator said, that we don't just put window dressing on this, but we really start to look at fixing what those issues are. So one of the examples that I was going to give, and Kara kind of touched on it, was with this whole issue of mental health and what is the impact of that. And if you talk about it, it doesn't necessarily fit into the criminal justice system, but it certainly impacts the criminal justice system by what we do or what we don't do. We see this as being at a very critical time for the Department of Corrections, and you've heard all through the conversation today about the local level. That's where a lot of this is happening. And it jumps from local level all the way up to Department of Corrections. So what's in between there and what happens there? That's what becomes very significant to us. That's what becomes very significant to our communities. And in terms of how and what we're going to do to be able to impact these issues. And in terms of how and what we're going to do to be able to impact these issues. So to use an example of this, I call it internal impacts. We have internal impacts on the jail, and we have external impacts on the jail. And this is a very pivotal time, as far as I'm concerned, with these discussions that are going on right now. It's very timely, and it's very important. But if we look at some of these internal impacts, and especially with this mental health issue, and what the impact of it has been, and it goes back, as was mentioned, that once these facilities started closing, the question became, what started to happen to all these folks? People with mental health issues, what happened to them? Where did they go? Well, it started to become pretty clear to us where they go. They end up in the jails, they end up in the county jails, and we are not equipped to deal with it. And it affects us on so many levels. So one of the things that, to start with, when we talk about these internal impacts, and people who are waiting, you know, we too have about 80, 85% of the folks in our jail are waiting for trial. So a lot of those then become people who are, have mental health issues, they finally get in front of a judge and they're found to be unfit for trial. We have them then an additional six weeks to two months, waiting to move them out to one of five different mental health facilities in the state till they, a bed opens. So until a bed opens, we have them in our jail, waiting to get them taken care of. We become responsible then for the care. We end up providing drugs, medications for them, security watches that we have to have on them, because they become very combative, they don't want to be there, they know they're supposed to be leaving. They go into things like hunger strikes and all these kinds of issues. So while our corrections officers are trying to deal with these folks and these issues, all the other things that are going on in the jail start to become lost. Last year in 2013, for the days, the, we had a total of 1,303 days where we had folks sitting and waiting to be moved out to a mental health facility. So far this year, it's equivalent of 798 days. And we have these folks in there that we, and the things that we have to attend to is a self-harm issue, and how do we deal with that, and what are the obligations that we have to protect them? When you have inmates going one-on-one on each other, I mean, it's pretty easy to deal with that. You can separate them, put them in different places, but when somebody wants to harm themselves, it becomes very, very difficult to control and have a handle on that. So far this year, in our jail, we had 240 threats of suicide, self-harm, 24 gestures, three attempts, and we actually had one of the suicides, or the actual attempt, self-harm suicide was successful, which that equates to 268 incidents. Total number of days so far this year, five months of the year, is what these numbers reflect. We had 985 days of suicide watch. So that means now our pods are starting to become units, where we start putting people with mental health issues into these pods. And there's a requirement that they be watched so often. So there's a 15-minute watch where everybody, these corrections officers are walking around to be able to, in a 24 and 48-tiered pod, where they're watching what's happening with these folks. The total number of inmates that we have on psychotropic meds is 25%, 297 people are on medication in the jail. Percentage of the total population considered mental health clients right now is at 12%. The external parts of this then, and how this impacts the entire community, and why we have to start to look at this as part of the big picture and part of the solution, and it may not come under the umbrella of just saying the criminal justice system, but it's an, it's an issue that has a play and has an effect on it. And as Cara was talking about, what happens to these people when they're found not guilty, or they've been in, and the charges drop, they've been released, and they're sent on their way? The issues that we face is because these folks have no medication now, they have no treatment, they're out on the street, the cycle starts all over again. They end up acting out because they're not on their medication, they're not seeing anybody, they're not getting any treatment, so the next person they see is the police again. The police arrest them, they bring them into the jail, and now we start all over again. And this keeps repeating itself. So these repeat offenders that we keep talking about, and a lot of these instances are people with mental health issues, they have no treatment, no medication, so they become a repeat offender. The jails have become, and I use the term a hiding place for the mental health issue, mental health issue in the state of Illinois. That's where all these folks are being housed, where we're housing all the mental health people in the county jails. And the other thing, just to give you an idea of what costs are, we have, when, going back to what I initially said, when we have these people who need to be, that are found not guilty, need to be sent to a mental health institution, we use Elgin, Chester, Choate, some of these, we have to transport them down there. So when you start to look at the cost of us sending two corrections officers out to take somebody on a two-day trip down to get them to Southern Illinois, to get them into a mental health facility, we're talking about 30, 35 man-hours and a cost of about $50,000 for one person to be transported. Those are significant costs. But do they really have a place in the jail system? I mean, is this what we're supposed to be dealing with? Is this what we're supposed to be looking at? We have programs that we put in place and things that we were looking at. You heard the Deputy Director Taylor talking about the NGA initiative, which is the National Governors Association, gave a grant to the state of Illinois. Two counties received that grant in Illinois. Lake County is one of them, St. Clair County is the other one. So we're participating in that grant. We have other programs that we're looking at with temp courts, with drug courts, mental health courts, where the courts and the jail system and the corrections are working together to try and have impact on these folks, and how do we minimize this jail space? And if we're looking at sentencing, and if we're looking at these issues in the criminal justice system and how they impact what's going on, if we're looking at the mental health issue, and what is the impact of that on the criminal justice, we have to be aware of that. And the reason I mention these other programs that we're involved in, the programming becomes very significant, because we keep talking about recidivism, and how do you measure that, and repeat offenders, but they're really mental health issues, are they truly recidivists, or are they need of mental health? If we take care of the mental health, do we have an impact on recidivism? And I think it becomes pretty obvious to what those answers are. But the other thing that we have to look at if we're talking about this is the inconsistencies that are in place when we talk about programming. Now, just like with this grant with the NGA initiative, Lake County up here and St. Clair County down here are participating in that program. We have programs with temp court and other things that we're doing in Lake County, but does McHenry County have them? If they don't have the same programs, does it become inconsistent? And are we minimizing then the impact that we're having? Because if McHenry County lets somebody out, they don't know that they just crossed Roberts Road and now they're in Lake County. And the same thing, if they're, with Cara ends up letting somebody go, they go across Lake Cook Road, now they're in Lake County. Those invisible boundaries don't mean anything to people. So the inconsistencies of these programs and things that we're doing and how we look at them, I think needs to be part of the consideration and the evaluation that we make as we look at the, the whole issue of this criminal justice system revamp or audit. So thank you for your time. I appreciate the opportunity. And going back to what was said earlier, I would invite anybody here who's interested to come to the Lake County Jail. We'd be happy to show you around, we'd be happy to talk about the programs that we have, and I would be happy to spend the time with you to, to be able to give you some visual assistance in what we're trying to deal with and what those issues are.
Mr. Rose, I think we'll have members take you up on that offer. Chairperson Nolan.
Quick question. Sheriff, 12% of your population, how much of your budget mentally ill?
I don't know.
If you don't have the answer, that's quite all right. We'll come back, okay?
I can certainly get that for you.
You'll be fine. Thank you. Compelling testimony. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sheriff.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity.
We have no other witnesses. We did have four people file witness slips to testify at the IHSA hearing that was today, but unfortunately, they filed for the wrong committee hearing, so we'll just pass along to the IHSA that they're not happy with them. Other than that, no other business to come before the, the Joint Criminal Justice Reform Committee will stand in recess to the college chair.